Welcome, everyone. I would like to call to order this meeting of the San Jose City Council for the afternoon of April 22nd. Tony, would you please call the roll?
Kamai. Campos. Present. Salas.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Ortiz.
Present.
Mulcahy.
Here.
Dwan.
Here.
Candelas.
Here.
Casey.
Here.
Foley.
Mahan.
Here.
Give a quorum.
Great. Thank you so much. All right. Now, if you're able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Today's invocation will be provided by Anne Spainhauer of the Don Edwards San Francisco Bay National Wildlife Refuge, and Councilmember Cohen will tell us more.
Thank you, Mayor. In honor of Earth Day, I wanted to highlight one of the great outdoor locations in District Four up in Alviso. We, along the shoreline there, have the Don Edwards San Francisco Bay National Wildlife Refuge. Anne Spainhauer is the Refuge Manager for the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. She has a master's degree in Environmental Studies and is an expert in endangered aquatic species and risk management. As a Refuge Manager, Anne manages 30,000 acres of bayfront lands along the southern half of San Francisco Bay that supports soft marsh habitat, nine threatened and endangered species, and provides green space for people living around the bay to enjoy the outdoors and engage in nature study and recreational activities. Anne.
Thank you very much. As we gather here today on Earth Day, please join me in acknowledging the deep interconnectedness of our communities with the natural environment. A little bit about Earth Day. Earth Day began right here in the United States just 55 years ago, and it's now observed all around the world. On this day in 1970, an estimated 20 million people, Americans, raised their voices to say it was time to prioritize the health of our environment because our individual and community well-being is deeply intertwined with the health of the world around us. Some tragic environmental events spurred the nationwide call to action, such as a massive oil spill that occurred off the coast of Santa Barbara that contaminated over 40 miles of California coastline. And then there was the Clayoga River in Ohio, which caught fire in 1969. And there was severe and widespread smog in cities like Los Angeles and New York that made it dangerous to breathe. These events galvanized people from neighborhoods to the national stage. People united around a shared concern for our future. Their voices helped launch a golden decade for environmental progress, leading to some of the greatest accomplishments in the United States' environmental history, such as the passage of the Clean Air Act, the Clean Water Act, the Marine Mammal Protection Act, and the Endangered Species Act. It also led to the establishment of the Don Edwards San Francisco Bay National Wildlife Refuge here in your backyard, which was one of the first urban national wildlife refuges at the time. Don Edwards National Wildlife Refuge came to life because a small group of concerned citizens cared deeply about the health of San Francisco Bay and the loss of the shoreline tidal wetlands. Don Edwards was built on the belief that we all need access to safe outdoor spaces for recreation, for learning, for connecting with nature, and that we must all engage in protecting our natural history and our heritage. Today, Don Edwards National Wildlife Refuge is a major landholder in South San Francisco Bay with properties in Alviso, Fremont, Redwood City, and Palo Alto. We're busy restoring tidal wetlands and wildlife habitats, working with cities like Alviso on flood control, and protecting nine different endangered species that occur in San Francisco Bay. And we're also building more trails to give you some of the best wildlife viewing opportunities in the South Bay. Don Edwards is your urban refuge, and every day is Earth Day at Don Edwards. We invite you to join us for programs that introduce you to the refuge, deepen your understanding of local wildlife, and offer opportunities for you to give back. In the coming weeks, we're hosting, just this Saturday, an event called Tending for Tomorrow, and it's a Habitat Restoration Event. We'll be meeting in Alviso, our Alviso property, at 8:45 a.m., and volunteers will help remove invasive plants and plant native ones. In May, we have a Twilight Marsh Walk. It's also open to the public. It's a peaceful sunset stroll to explore the refuge's beauty and learn more about the refuge. On May 11th, World Migratory Bird Day, you can come learn how citizen science supports conservation. And on May 18th, we have events both in Alviso and Fremont. We have National River Cleanup Day in Alviso, and we'll be doing a Stewardship Sunday in Fremont, where such things as lending a hand to conduct trash cleanup and refuge care. Look for us on Eventbrite. Query: Don Edwards San Francisco Bay National Wildlife Refuge, where we post our upcoming volunteer events and programs. Earth Day was and remains a call to action on behalf of our communities and our future. To borrow another phrase from another organization, "Can you take an hour for the earth?" This day is a reminder, we all share in the responsibility for a healthy environment, and that even small actions like picking up litter or planting a native plant can build stronger, healthier communities. Spending time outdoors, especially when volunteering, benefits both the planet and our personal well-being. Studies show it can lower stress, improve mood, enhance thinking, and foster stronger social bonds. So as we stand in this space today, let us honor those who led the way, who gave us local treasures like the Don Edwards National Wildlife Refuge, and let's commit to carrying their legacy forward, even if only for just an hour at a time. And finally, as we move forward with today's deliberations, may this council be guided by wisdom, compassion, and a shared commitment to the common good. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Appreciate that history and reflection and the work you do out at the Don Edwards San Francisco Bay National Wildlife Refuge. Thank you for being here. We'll move on to our ceremonial items. Councilmember Cohen and Councilmember Kamai, if you join me at the podium, we will recognize and proclaim April as Earth Day, Earth Month.
We're going to keep the celebration of Earth Day going in our next proclamation here. We're so lucky to have such amazing open spaces and natural locations here in our city. Today, we celebrate Earth Day, which was founded on April 22nd, 1970. Today, the planet is more at risk than any time in our history, and Earth Day is more important than ever. While the federal government has the environment in its crosshairs, what we do at the local level is even more important. We have a greater obligation to act locally to address climate change and protect our environment. Earth Day is a reminder to be good stewards of our planet, and we must reaffirm our commitment to bold, thoughtful, and sustainable policy. It's appropriate that today at this council meeting, we will be getting our Climate Smart Update and discuss the proposed programs for San Jose Clean Energies Investments. The decisions we make today will shape the future of our planet for generations to come. In San Jose, we are fortunate to be surrounded by natural beauty and open space, but it is up to us to protect it. Earth Day reminds us that the health of our environment is tied to the health of our communities, our economy, and our future. I can think of no one more fitting to receive today's commendation than Helen Chapman, the Board President of the Open Space Authority. Helen exemplifies what it means to be an environmental steward. Her decades of tireless service, particularly her passionate advocacy to preserve Coyote Valley, have helped safeguard one of our region's most vital ecological treasures. Helen's tenure at the City of San Jose was marked by unwavering support for green policy, open space protection, and sustainability. She continues that legacy as Chairperson of the Open Space Authority. Helen exemplifies the spirit of Earth Day, so I'm honored, along with Councilmember Kamai, Mayor Mahan, to present today's proclamation declaring April 27th as Earth Day in San Jose to Helen Chapman. Let us all be inspired by her example and recommit ourselves to protecting the planet.
This is still strange to be on this side of the podium. I'm used to being over there. Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Cohen, and the rest of the city council. I am truly grateful and thankful for this honor. It's also an honor to serve on the Board of Directors for the Santa Clara Valley Open Space Authority. On Earth Day, I think it's important to acknowledge and celebrate the work we've done so far to protect Coyote Valley. The agency continues to move forward with a master plan that will create a roadmap for future use and restoration of the Coyote Valley's recently protected valley floor lands. I'm very proud to be part of this work, as I truly believe the greatest gift we can leave our children and grandchildren is the protection of our environment and natural resources. I invite you to go right now. The wildflowers are in bloom. It's beautiful. It's green. Go out and take a hike. Go out to Myon and Wakma. Go out to Sierra Ridge. Go out to Coyote Valley and take a hike and breathe in the nature and take a look at the valley floor, and you'll see what we've protected. Thank you so very much.
All right. We're going to keep the sustainability theme going here. Councilmember Ortiz, if you'd join me at the podium, we will recognize and proclaim April 22nd as Arbor Day as well. All right. I think we have some guests coming to join us.
Good afternoon, everyone. As our guests walk down, today is Arbor Day, a national holiday to celebrate the importance of America's tree canopy for the environment, the health of Americans, and the beauty of our communities. In San Jose, it's time to celebrate the hard work of our Department of Transportation staff, who work hard to preserve and expand this city's urban canopy. As a representative for the East Side, an area where our canopy has historically lacked investment, I know the value of these trees to our community all too well. I am so happy to have a partner in the Transportation Department, as well as community partners such as our City Forest, to plant trees in our communities to reduce temperatures, beautify our public spaces, and improve the air quality for all of our city's residents. I'm proud to, alongside the mayor and the entire city council, present this proclamation to the department to commend the work of the city's arborists and, of course, our City Forest staff, and hope to continue this investment in this very important and vital work for our residents so that we all live in a healthy, beautiful, and climate-ready neighborhood for many years to come. I want to invite anyone interested in that work to join our City Forest for an Arbor Day tree planting at the beautiful Overfelt Gardens this Saturday morning at 8:30 p.m. in District 5. And now, I'd like to invite no one other than the Transportation Director, Mr. John Ristau, to please share a few words.
Thank you, Councilmember Ortiz. And yes, we're very proud to actually acknowledge and accept this proclamation for Arbor Day, a perfect day being Earth Day. And I also want to point out that 2025 marks the 40th year that the City of San Jose has been a tree city. All that comes together with a lot of support and thank you from mayor and council, who are our greatest supporters when it comes to tree planting and maintaining and improving our urban tree canopy. I also want to thank our partners that are part of this whole effort, our City Forest and Rhonda Berry. We couldn't do it without them. And our City Department Parks Recreation Neighborhood Services under John Sisarelli, because they do a lot of tree planting and also manage the tree canopy. So just want to acknowledge and thank everybody for that. Thank you.
And now, the mayor will present the proclamation.
All right. And on to our final ceremonial item. Councilmember Dwan, if you would join me here at the podium, we will recognize and proclaim National Fallen Firefighters Weekend.
Good afternoon, everyone. Let me wait for a few others. Thank you for being here. I stand before you with humility and deep respect to recognize and proclaim May 3rd and 4th as National Fallen Firefighter Weekends. A time to honor and remember our fallen brothers and sisters who selflessly serve community across the United States. As many of you may know, I had the privilege, serving as a firefighter with the City of San Jose for over 20 years. I understand firsthand the sacrifices we made every single day by all brave men and women in this incredible profession. Extraordinary individuals make extraordinary decisions in the phase of life and death without hesitation. Though they have family and loved one, they choose to protect other during the most vulnerable moments of their lives. They miss out on being with their family on holidays, on birthdays, on special occasion. Their sacrifice will go without unnoticed. We, as a community, we are proud of our fire department. To honor their legacy, my office will light the rotunda on the weekend of May 3rd and 4th in remembrance of our fallen firefighters. We honor their service, mourn their loss, and commit to never forget the impact they made on our lives and our community. To those who continue to serve, thank you from the bottom of my heart. I know all too well the dedication, the sacrifice, and the strength it takes to wear that uniform every day. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your commitment, and thank you for your sacrifice. Mayor, commendation, please.
Good afternoon. Robert Sapian, Fire Chief, San Jose Fire Department. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Dwan and the full council for this recognition today. Annually, I take time to review fatality reports that occurred throughout the nation. And today, as I reflected on this moment, I thought a lot about the families of those fallen firefighters. And so, on their behalf, I thank you all very much for taking time today to recognize this moment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all very much. We are on to orders of the day. Does anyone on the council have any changes to the printed agenda? Not aware of any. Not seeing any hands. Today's meeting is adjourned in memory of Nguyen Trum Chin, who passed away on April 7th, 2025. In 2015, he founded the nonprofit Vong Tha Lakh Viet, creating a vital platform for Vietnamese writers, poets, and artists. His work enriched San Jose's cultural landscape and helped preserve the heritage and voices of the Vietnamese community. Through his work and dedication, Mr. Chin Nguyen advanced San Jose's vision of being a more inclusive and culturally vibrant city. Councilmember Dwan, please tell us more.
Thank you, Mayor. Colleagues and members of the public, today I ask that we adjourn this meeting in the memory of Mr. Chin Nguyen, a revered, literarily, very figure, respected community voice, and a proud Vietnamese-American who dedicated his life to preserving history, enriching literature, and upholding the spirit of freedom through his words. Born in 1945 in Tan Leb, Haddong, in what was the northern Vietnam, in 1954, like many others fleeing from the communist regimes, he migrated with his family to the South Vietnam. Mr. Nguyen served with honor in the Republic of Vietnam Air Force during a critical time in his homeland history. After the fall of Saigon in 1975, Mr. Nguyen resettled in the United States, where he rebuilt his life and continued to uplift others. He spent over 20 years working at IBM as an engineer, all while never giving up his first love, literature. Under the pen name of Ha Nguyen Trum, and later Chin Nguyen, he published a wealth of works that reflect the sorrow, resilience, and hope of generation. His novels, such as Book Chinhuaang, meaning "Wandering Step," and "The Thorn in the Heart," offer deep insight into the Vietnamese exile experience. His poetry collection, Words of Sad Love, Endless Pain, and Eye of the Sea, among others, speak to themselves of love, loss, identity, and longing for the homeland he left behind. He served as a chairman of the Vong Tha Lakh Viet Association, mentor emerging writers, and contribute to the Vietnamese language literacy platform from California to Colorado and beyond. Today, we honor Mr. Nguyen not only for his military and professional service, but his unwavering devotion to preserving Vietnamese culture through literature. His voice added depth to the Vietnamese-American story, and his legacy will live on every single page he wrote and every heart he touches. On the behalf of the City of San Jose and District 7, I extend our deepest condolences to Mr. Nguyen family, his friends, his reader, and the many who saw their own story reflect in his words. May he rest in peace, and may we continue to uplift the voice of those who dedicated their lives to truth, remembrance, and healing through arts. I ask that the family member would like to come down and take a photo in front of the dais.
Thank you to San Jose City Council. For honoring Mr. Chin Nguyen, president of Lakh Viet Poetry Association, for over 10 years. He's a cultural figure with many positive contributions to our Vietnamese community in the Bay Area, California. He's honored today and correct our children to the board, integrate into the United States, and maintain the good nature of Vietnamese people. One again, one behalf of association, I would like to express my gratitude for this honor. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. We are so sorry for your loss. We will all miss Mr. Chin Nguyen. We're going to move on now to the consent calendar. Are there any items that council would like to pull from consent? I'm aware of at least two. Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped the closed session report. Nora, I apologize. Thanks for the reminder.
Thank you, Mayor. Usually, we don't have anything to report out of closed session, but today I actually do. We are participating in a settlement in a lawsuit, an unfair, or a False Claims Act lawsuit brought on behalf of the United States, a number of states, and a number of cities against JM Manufacturing Company Incorporated and Formosa Plastics Corporation. The settlement agreement itself will be made available to the public upon request. The terms of the settlement are essentially a extension, 50-year extension of a warranty for piping that did not meet specifications. Thank you.
Thank you, Nora. Appreciate your report out of closed session. Now, we are on to the consent calendar. I'm aware of Councilmember Salas pulling item 2.7, and Councilmember Kamai pulling for comment item 2.14. Are there any
over 100 years ago, second, that the Viennese laid the foundation for building a city that prioritizes children and their families, and third, the unshakable value to ensure housing for all people, from the lowest-income earners to those in the middle class. So, more on that shortly. Next slide, please. Thank you. So, it may be easy to say that Vienna and San Jose have nothing in common, but you'd be surprised. So, this is a table with some quick compare-and-contract data to put things into perspective. Vienna houses double San Jose's population in a slightly smaller geography. San Jose has a high rate of renters. Vienna has more renters. And just like we value diversity in San Jose with a 40% foreign-born population, Vienna is also one of the most diverse cities in Europe, with 20,000 new residents migrating annually. Next slide, please. So, the first takeaway, looking at this in a 100-year context and how Vienna was able to move so quickly. At the time of, right after World War I, Vienna was one of the wealthiest countries in the world. However, Vienna was also plagued with unaffordability and poor health conditions in the housing sector. What follows was a commitment to right these wrongs. Vienna invested heavily in housing that was aimed at stabilizing working-class residents, building 64,000 new social housing units, and providing housing for over 20,000 people, which was roughly 10% of Vienna's population at the time. Now, we all know about the devastation in Europe that was caused by World War II, and Vienna remained steadfast in their commitment to housing their residents. They built over 140,000 new social housing units over 30 years. And, pardon my German, but Wiener Wohnen, which is a city-owned entity that manages, constructs, and rehabilitates municipal housing on an annual basis, directs approximately 440 to 450 million euros annually for social housing. This is derived from a 1% housing construction tax and repayment of low-interest loans to limited-profit housing. Happy to share more about that offline. Next slide, please. So, second key takeaway, Vienna is a child-centered city, and I tried through pictures and a short video afterwards to demonstrate what that means. But, in a nutshell, it acknowledges streets as public spaces to ensure that people are not just moving through, but pausing and spending time. This drives foot traffic in urban centers and incentivizes dollars to our local businesses and retailers. And fundamentally, when we build for children, everybody benefits. Sidewalks that are wide enough for strollers are wide enough for wheelchairs and walkers. And when we fail in supporting these needs, the downstream effects impacts all of our residents. So, next slide is a very short video, trying to encompass what building for children looks like. So, you can see a mix of children, a center of green open space, high-density housing, just an opportunity to play, explore, meet your neighbors in a very organic manner. Next slide, please. And so, the next slide talks about leading with values and what housing for all means. It means that regardless of political ideologies, there is one common value among the Viennese, and that is that high-quality and affordable housing is built and available to all residents. Everybody benefits, every age, every income, because the value is in the people and not the buildings. You can see here, multi-generational environment, grandparents walking their young child. To the right, I got to tour a co-op senior housing floor that was one floor in a private development that was specifically for seniors and gives seniors an opportunity to live together and age gracefully together. And it was really a big highlight in my trip to get to hear about how transformational it is to seniors who are experiencing loneliness and want a sense of community in their last years of life. Next slide, please. And so, how do we apply this to San Jose? Because we know that housing is key to participation in society, and we have an opportunity here to build thriving neighborhoods by working with our local businesses, our community leaders, and most of all, our residents. We can find opportunities to make progress towards what I hope is our shared goal of making San Jose the best place to raise a family. It benefits everybody to invest in housing affordability for all, and it especially supports our businesses, because when you have people with more discretionary income to spend, neighborhood shops, local experiences, and our small businesses will have more revenue to generate. So, I thank you all for hearing about my trip and what I learned, and again, happy to dive deeper into any of these topics of interest or otherwise further offline. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, councilmember, for your travel report. Looks like a fascinating trip and certainly a lot to learn. Let's come back to the items that were polled, the other items. So, we'll go to Councilwoman Kamay next for comment on item 2.14.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to offer separate comments on this item. The Stevens Creek Boulevard Corridor Vision Study is a fruit of over a year-long effort commencing even before my tenure with my predecessor, Chappie Jones, and continuing to this present day. It has required the policy buy-in, however strong and tentative, from multiple partners and neighbors, the county, VTA, the cities of Santa Clara and Cupertino. Efforts like this are tough and require extensive outreach, and this study was no different and included numerous stakeholder interviews, four rounds of focus groups, four rounds of pop-ups, two corridor studies, four online webinars, four community advisory group meetings, several steering committee meetings, a dedicated website, and the support of city communications and surveys. Thank you so much. This is a level of community engagement worthy of major general plan amendment. The feedback it provided the steering committee, which I had the honor of chairing, helped members and jurisdictions they represented to see the challenges as well as opportunities in the corridor from multiple angles. Their own willingness to grapple with these issues helped drive the committee towards a consensus of a vision. The document before us is that consensus. I look forward to the next stage of this effort as we move forward toward implementation, which should dramatically improve the streetscape, safety of Stevens Creek Boulevard in the near term, and improve transit access and quality in the decades to come. I want to thank my colleagues, the public, and our partners at VTA, the county, Santa Clara, and Cupertino for their support. And I really want to extend a special thank you for our city staff that really, they had meetings every other week, I think, and continue to do so. So, I just want to say thank you so much. It is a huge collaboration with the multiple jurisdictions, so thank you for the opportunity to comment on that.
Thanks, councilmember. Appreciate your comments and the overview of the extensive process. Now, let's turn to Councilwoman Salas, who I know wants to comment and make a motion on item 2.7 and perhaps the rest of the consent calendar as well.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Hey, I just wanted to say, you know, I moved to San Jose 50 years ago, and I still remember in the springtime encountering all the wildflowers. I'll never forget that. And at Christmas, encountering Christmas in the park. It is just a spectacularly iconic and also popular event in San Jose. And so, I wanted to thank the staff and Christmas in the park for all they do. I also wanted to say that this year, for the first time, the Christmas in the Park folks had a, gave us the ability to ride our bicycles through the Christmas in the Park extension at the History San Jose. It was really cool, very creative, and I will never forget it, and I hope we'll have more of that. And that's why with that, I wanted to motion to move the memorandum I co-authored with you and Councilmember Campos, Mulcahy, and Candelus along with that consent, as well as the entire consent calendar.
Great. Thank you, councilmember. Appreciate your comments and echo the thanks to the Christmas in the Park team. I see we have some board members and volunteers and folks here, so hopefully we'll hear from a few of them in just a moment here. Let me just see if we have any other hands up, and then we'll go to public comment before we take a vote. Vice Mayor?
I'll wait for a public comment if you'd like to go there first.
Sure.
I can wrap up after that. Thanks.
Great. Okay. So, Toni, we'll go to public comment now.
Ellen Coleman. Oh, let me give my normal speech. When I call your name, you don't have to come down in the order that we call you. First person in the microphone, just go up there, and the other people can line up behind or sit in the front row where it says "reserved." I have Ellen Coleman, Debbie, Joanne, Carmen, Mike Girard. Let's start with those.
Mayor Mahan, councilmembers. My name is Debbie DeGudis. I am the managing director at Christmas in the Park. One evening last December, when the lights in our park were just beginning to twinkle, a guest came up to me and said, "This is San Jose." Christmas in the Park is more than displays, decorated trees, hot chocolate, and churros. We are a place of equity and access. More than 700,000 people visit our park every year for free. Families take their own photos with Santa for free. Accessible Sunday has special activations for families with special needs, so they too can enjoy the holidays for free. We are a nonprofit organization with a dedicated board of directors and a passionate staff that work year-round to make this happen. We produce San Jose's holiday town square, where everyone can connect, collaborate, and celebrate. We know our event is a key economic driver for the local businesses in the city. We also know that more than ever before, we need support from community leaders. This year, we're showing a deficit of $250,000. To be clear, we are not the ice rink, we are not the food trucks, the amusement rides, or anything else that surrounds our festival. We make no money from those activities, nor do we have any control over them. With regard to the memo from the mayor and the councilmembers, we have always appreciated a collaborative partnership with city staff, and the offer of support for our setup and our teardown is much appreciated. We look forward to thoughtful discussions in the future about what the holidays look like in a dynamic urban environment. Input is needed from property owners, local businesses that benefit from the $20 million we drive into the economy, and of course, we need to hear from the residents of San Jose, for whom this is a beloved tradition. Christmas in the Park, this is San Jose.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. I'm here to comment on item 2.8. My name is Carmen Alba, Senior Vice President of the Northwest Region for TransDev Services, Inc. It has been a privilege to serve the citizens and visitors of the city for the past 25 years. We are proud of the strong partnership we've built with our colleagues at the airport and of the exceptional customer service experience we've consistently delivered, an experience that's become a benchmark for excellence in the San Jose region. Although we're disappointed that our relationship is ending due to a previously unknown and unrelated Labor Commission violation, which has since been fully resolved, we remain committed to ensuring a smooth and professional transition of services. At this time, I'd like to recognize our team. We are thankful, and we are thankful for the amazing team here at San Jose Airport, under the leadership of the general manager, Mike Girard. We are also grateful for the many years of collaborations and welcome the opportunities to work with the city again in the future. And now, we'll hand it over to Mike Girard. He'd like to share a few words. Thank you.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. As a general manager of this location, I want to express just how much these 25 years of service have meant for all of us. For a quarter of a century, we haven't just been doing a job, we've built a team that feels like family. Many of our employees have been here, working side by side to support this community, and it's been an honor to lead such a dedicated group of individuals. Over the years, we've built something special with our customers and clients. That connections go far beyond business. It's trust, reliability, and mutual respect. We've always taken pride in the quality of the service we deliver and in the relationship we've developed that speaks to our commitment. While we are deeply saddened by the closure of this location, I want to make it clear that our desire to serve the community has not changed. We remain hopeful that there will be opportunities in the future to return, to continue supporting our city and the people who rely on us. Thank you for the opportunity to serve 25 years here at San Jose as the general manager, and it really was a pleasure. It was a great time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call Harry Neal, Brian Darby, Jordan. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Mahan and council. My name is Ellen Coleman, and I am the daughter-in-law of Mary and Don Lima, the founders of Christmas in the Park. The Lima family mortuary was where the first displays were shown. When the popularity and traffic got too much for Don, he looked for backers and moved it to City Hall in the late '70s. It was then given to the City of San Jose, where it now draws over 700,000 people. In 1980 was the first parade, which my late husband was captain of for later years until it ended. The Lima's vision was to always have the admission free of charge, so that all could attend no matter what their financial situation was. Don passed away in 1988, and Mary in 1995. By Christmas of 1995, the display that we had built was up at the park, the Little Swiss Clockmaker. My husband, Patrick, and I were very involved, going to the warehouse, volunteering once the displays were moved to the park, helping at the info booth, announcing acts, and whatever else was needed. And when my son was old enough, we brought him in too. We lovingly cleaned and refurbished his chalet, painting our family's initials in the hearts. Pat worked tirelessly to make sure that these displays were up and running for all to enjoy. Since my husband passed away almost six years ago, that has become my mission as well. Every year when the displays are moved, the city, Debbie DeGudis in particular, has graciously allowed me to put up a plaque on the chalet in his honor. My whole family meets downtown, has lunch, and takes pictures in front of the Swiss Clockmaker. This has been our Christmas tradition since 1980, and I urge you to let it continue. Seeing the joy on the kids' faces that otherwise might not have a Christmas is priceless. It also makes my grandchildren extremely proud of the work that their grandpa did. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call Thurston.
I want to express just how much these 25 years of service have meant for all of us. For a quarter of a century, we haven't just been doing a job. We've built a team that feels like family. Many of our employees have been here, working side by side, to support this community, and it's been an honor to lead such a dedicated group of individuals. Over the years, we've built something special with our customers and clients. The, that connections go far beyond business. It's trust, reliability, and mutual respect. We've always taken pride in the quality of the service we deliver and in the relationship we've developed that speaks to our commitment. While we are deeply saddened by the closure of this location, I want to make it clear that our desire to serve the community has not changed. We remain hopeful that there will be opportunities in the future to return, to continue supporting our city and the people who are loyal. Thank you for the opportunity to serve 25 years here at San Jose as the General Manager, and it really was a pleasure. It was a great time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call Harry Neal, Brian Darby, Jordan. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Mahan and Council. My name is Ellen Coleman, and I am the daughter-in-law of Mary and Don Lima, the founders of Christmas in the Park. The Lima Family Mortuary was where the first displays were shown. When the popularity and traffic got too much for Don, he looked for backers and moved it to City Hall in the late '70s. It was then given to the city of San Jose, where it now draws over 700,000 people. In 1980 was the first parade, which my late husband was captain of for later years until it ended. The Lima's vision was to always have the admission free of charge so that all could attend, no matter what their financial situation was. Don passed away in 1988, and Mary in 1995. By Christmas of 1995, the display that we had built was up at the park, the Little Swiss Clockmaker. My husband, Patrick, and I were very involved, going to the warehouse, volunteering once the displays were moved to the park, helping at the info booth, announcing acts, and whatever else was needed. And when my son was old enough, we brought him in too. We lovingly cleaned and refurbished his chalet, painting our family's initials in the hearts. Pat worked tirelessly to make sure that these displays were up and running for all to enjoy. Since my husband passed away almost six years ago, that has become my mission as well. Every year, when the displays are moved, the city, Debbie DeGudis in particular, has graciously allowed me to put up a plaque on the chalet in his honor. My whole family meets downtown, has lunch, and takes pictures in front of the Swiss Clockmaker. This has been our Christmas tradition since 1980, and I urge you to let it continue. Seeing the joy on the kids' faces that otherwise might not have a Christmas is priceless. It also makes my grandchildren extremely proud of the work that their grandpa did. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call Thurston.
Hello, everybody, councilmembers, mayor. My name is Joanne Samansky, and I'm here to speak on behalf of something that holds deep meaning for San Jose, Christmas in the Park. For over 45 years, this tradition has brought light, joy, and a sense of community to our city. And I want to remind all of us, this tradition didn't just start 45 years ago. It actually began over 75 years ago, back in the 1950s, when Don Lima set up the very first Christmas display in front of his business on Willis Street. What began in the 1950s as a modest display by Don Lima has blossomed into a month-long celebration at Plaza de Cesar Chavez, attracting more than 700,000 people, as you just heard. And Plaza de Cesar Chavez has been a wonderful centerpiece for Christmas in the Park all these years. This event is more than just festive decorations. It's a cultural event. And one of the most beautiful things about Christmas in the Park is that it's completely free, open, to everyone, regardless of income, background, et cetera. This was the intention from the very beginning for this board, powered by volunteers who contribute their manpower during the year and go to the warehouse to keep the displays up. Over 500 Christmas trees decorated by schools, nonprofits, and businesses transform the park into winter wonderland, fostering community pride and unity. And it seems like the whole community is involved. Moreover, Christmas in the Park significantly boosts our local economy. According to Wikipedia, which I checked out, contributing an estimated $13 million in visitor spending each year. I believe what's missing today in many communities is tradition, something people can feel connected to and take a lot of pride.
Yes. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Harry Neal. I'm a local transit advocate, member of VTA Citizens Advisory Committee, and student at Deans College. I'm here today in my personal capacity. Item 2.14 on the consent agenda, the Stevens Creek Corridor Vision Study. It is imperative that it is adopted as is with no changes. The staff memorandum indicated that should there be any changes, then the process of developing consensus may have to be started again. Realistically, that would mean probably a six-month or more delay. When this plan is about safety and sustainability, especially on a corridor that has seen far too many injuries and fatalities, it is imperative, truly imperative, that there is no delay and that is adopted and implemented as soon as possible. Stevens Creek is arguably Santa Clara County's most important corridor. It is a major hub of housing, education, shopping, recreation, and much, much more. And in a time where things are frankly seemingly only getting worse, this is a bright spot, at least for me. So I do truly hope that you will adopt and implement this plan as soon as possible with no changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call down Millie.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for having the clock fixed. Appreciate it. Consent item 2.7, Christmas in the Park. What else can I say but what those wonderful people shared? Christmas in the Park is Christmas in the park. 2.8, I would just ask you, there's a letter in the public comment section of this particular item that talks about maybe expanding that bus route. It looks like they have some good ideas. I'll just call your attention to that, please. 2.9, as for the homeless stuff, I would appreciate accurate data and public transparency. 2.14, the Stevens Creek Boulevard, I want to spend some time on. It is like the gentleman shared. It is, I ride down Stevens Creek, and people aim for you. And if you don't think that, write down it and watch what happens. I've been driven off the curb a whole bunch of times, and you wind up, you just can't go down the street. You can't ride on the sidewalk, you're not supposed to. But you try to ride in the street, and you take your life in your hands every time you drive down there on a bicycle, or walking and trying to cross the street. People run red lights. People don't look when they make right-hand turns, and everybody has to go at least 50 miles over the speed limit. That's a little bit of an exaggeration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Thurston. I'm a D3 resident. I actually walked over here, which is something I enjoy being able to do. I also enjoy, you know, racing, and you know, I ride my motorcycle as well, you know, when I commute. But, you know, when I've had a long day, worked 12 hours, you know, things are failing, I need to grab a hard drive because it just failed. It's one of those things where something you love becomes a chore, and you can recognize that it starts to become unsafe, especially, you know, if I'm leaving at 8:00 a.m., coming back at 8:00 p.m. And it's one of those times where I consciously know I would rather take the bus. But if that's going to be an extra hour to my day, that's usually not the, you know, it's a strong trade-off that you have to make. This is why it's really important to, for me to be able to walk if I'm, you know, having a drink later, and I don't want to have to drive to be able to have that option. And a lot of people choose not to take that option when there are things in the way, like cars whizzing past you way too quickly. Or again, if those bus routes are not in places where I can make that trip to Best Buy to pick up a hard drive that's failing. So I just wanted to emphasize that it's really important to prioritize those public transport options so that people like me have other options, like walking, like biking, when we're trying to get places like to this council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, Jordan Moldow, District 3. I'm here to speak in support of items 2.7, 2.11, and 2.14. Christmas in the Park is a great event. Please approve the actions and the memorandum that's been proposed. I do think that Cesar Chavez Park is a great location to have that event, but St. James Park also seems like a good option, so I appreciate the flexibility. I hope you'll also consider the flexibility of helping to improve the safety more outside the immediate bounds of the event by considering street closures during parts or all of the event. We saw during the Nvidia conference that we can close parts or all of Market Street and still drive a ton of economic activity. And Christmas in the Park also drives a ton of economic activity. And making that event feel a lot safer for the people will make more people want to go and also feel more comfortable crossing the street to go to the businesses there. For item 2.14, please approve the Stevens Creek Vision Study. It's a great study. All the actions in there are great, and it's really important for implementing our city's Transit First policy on Stevens Creek Corridor. And there's also a coalition letter that's been sent as part of that agenda item. For item 2.11, it's adding a new connection to the Guadalupe River Trail. Great project. Finally, on item 2.8, I sent a written public comment. So we've got some sports events coming up next year, and there's going to be a lot of people flying into the city of San Jose, hopefully going to SJC, hopefully taking the light rail and the buses. And there needs to be a much better connection between SJC and the light rail. And I think that the shuttle bus, which currently only serves the parking lots, could be used as a vehicle for potentially shuttling more people to light rail. So I hope that there's flexibility in the contract being signed that allows for potential route changes in the future. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hello. My name is Millie, and I'm a resident of District 10, but I also live in District 3 for college because I'm a San Jose State student. And I'm a frequent bus and bike and light rail rider, though I do drive a car on the occasion when I require to. And one of those occasions is when I need to go to Stevens Creek because it is just too dangerous, and it is too wide and too fast to bike there. And the buses get stuck in traffic, stuck in those red lights so long, especially at the interchange with the freeways there. And so I strongly encourage you to adopt the Stevens Creek Vision Plan. It's, would significantly revolutionize how people get around and would really help the communities, both there and the communities all around San Jose who want to go there, to be able to go there and pass through that area much more safely and hopefully, you know, be actually encouraged to use buses and bikes. Whereas right now, it is almost impossible to do so if you want to arrive places in a timely or safe manner. And so, yeah.
Back to council.
Okay, thank you. And I believe Vice Mayor Foley wanted to maybe ask a couple of questions.
I did. Thank you. Specifically about 2.7, the Christmas in the Park item. I appreciate the memo. First, I have to say that I absolutely love Christmas in the Park. I think it's a wonderful community event. I love hosting a district night and bringing in the bands and choirs from my district. It actually led into inspiring us to hold our Music in the Valley Festival, which we do every year. And small plug, coming up again, fourth year, on May 10. Hopefully, you can join. I know Councilmember Cohen has a competing event, but different parts of the city. At any rate, that's not why I'm commenting. What I really want to know, and I think the memo is, raises some questions that I had regarding Christmas in the Park. And so I wondered, Debbie, if you could come down here? I have some questions about the memo and your feeling about relocating Christmas in the Park. Have you been, have you discussed this with the staff about possibly relocating? And what would that look like?
Thank you for the question. So the possibility of us moving has been talked about in general terms for a while. And it wasn't until last week that it became a little bit more real in just conversations with city staff. To be quite frank, our Board of Directors was asked to consider a move. But right now, we are focused entirely on our budget deficit and trying to figure out not how we move, but how we just survive. We are, and always have been, a really good city partner. When we look at a move, we really want to do it with businesses in mind and with the residents in mind. It's really not about what we want to do. It's about what the 700,000 people want out of Christmas in the Park. Right now, one of our big concerns is, with any move anywhere, it'll take us at least a year to figure out how to activate that space. And it will also take a chunk of money to make that happen as well. We have 45 years of being in one park. We know that park better than probably most anybody else in the city. So now, to try to move into a new apartment or a new house, we don't know how all the furniture is going to fit. We have no idea where the doors are or where the, you know, windows are. So it's going to be a big ask on us.
Thank you. I appreciate that. But with any relocation, you could move into a better location. So the way I read this memo, it appears that the intent, and Mayor, I guess this question is for you, that the city and the, and Christmas in the Park would work together on a relocation. This isn't something that we're going to say to them, "No, you have to move." It, the way I read it is that writing some flexibility into the agreement to possibly open the doors for relocation, but not requiring it.
That's right. That's how it's written. It is not written as a requirement. It's meant to acknowledge that there's a conversation happening about how to handle the incredible growth and success, frankly, of Christmas in the Park that some might argue has outgrown the space, but we love it being downtown. I think it is just an incredible tradition. We have many other stakeholders in the downtown who also have their views on it. But as Debbie said, I think the most important thing is how do we best serve the community? We have 700,000 people who love the tradition and attend. We want to find a place that can accommodate the size and scope of the event, where people can move around safely, where there's minimal impacts on other stakeholders. Obviously, the downtown is always evolving. We now have 700 college students living right on the edge of the park during finals as Christmas in the Park is happening. There are a lot of different factors. And so there's a conversation happening. I think the memo is simply an attempt to acknowledge that it's a possibility. It's not a requirement, and it's an ongoing conversation. But should it be possible, that may be an outcome, no one should be surprised that we could look at other venues, whether in the downtown or elsewhere.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I do remember the pandemic and how Christmas in the Park had to evolve really quickly to accommodate the pandemic. And that evolved into Christmas in the Park tradition, and then the drive-through at History San Jose, which actually is really fun. If you don't go, you ought to. It's really enjoyable. So I initially read the memo, and I thought, oh, there's nothing here. And then I read it again, and I thought, oh, maybe there is. And now I'm reading it again, and I'm thinking, you know, this really opens up the flexibility to use a space that might be better fit. I believe Christmas in the Park, its configuration right now, it is tight. But I kind of, it's kind of nice, too. But when you're bringing bands in and other organizations in to perform, it makes it really difficult. So anywhere we go has to be, my preference, downtown with lots of, lots of good parking. So we'll see where this goes, but I'm happy to support the memo. Thanks, Debbie, and I love your organization.
We love your support. Actually, just for the record, your district is the first to always buy a tree and book stage time. So not that we play favorites, but we have one.
Not just words, but actions. All right.
You don't need me.
Well, friendly competition. Okay, excellent. Well, appreciate that. Vice Mayor, oh, looks like you've inspired some other comments. Let's go to Councilwoman Dwan next.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to speak on behalf of Christmas in the Park and 2.7. Who doesn't like Christmas in the Park? I've been up here for 43 years now, and I, every year, I go there, and I take families and friends. It's incredible that we have just 35 days. You bring in over 700,000 visitor, and it's an economic viability that bring in $20 million-plus. Now, I just want to say thank you to Debbie and your staff, and just absolutely incredible work that you do. And I know that it's the only Christmas in the Park in the whole country that's free. And if any of you, my colleagues, haven't visited the Santa workshop at the Central Yard, please do. It's incredible. And I have privilege, when I was working in the fire department, I visit almost every single year. And just a, just a quick plug for District 7 here, you know, if you ever decide to move. I was just thinking, why don't we just do it right there in the Kelly Park Zoo with all the background? And we got the parking and the San Jose State to support. Just a thought. Well, I will be supporting the Christmas in the Park, and thank you so much for all the work that you do.
Thanks, Councilmember. Let's go to Councilwoman Salas.
Yeah, just a quick comment. When I, when I signed that, I was, I was visualizing. People think I'm nuts, but I, our Guadalupe River is spectacular. I was actually picturing people being able to extend from Christmas in the Park and going down this beautiful river. And so I just, I always felt that, especially seeing what Debbie has done in particularly during COVID, and particularly because I got to ride my bicycle last year, I just feel like the sky's the limit in terms of not only what is possible, but also how much money could that iconic and popular event could bring to the city. So I just wanted to give a little background. Thanks.
Thanks, Councilmember. Appreciate that thought. And I actually had similar thoughts. A lot of options, a lot of, a lot of good space downtown that needs to be activated. Okay, so appreciate everybody's comments. Thank you again to the folks from Christmas in the Park for your work year-round and the incredible festivities around the holidays that you all make possible. And to everybody else who spoke today, thank you for being here. Okay, let's go to a vote. Toni?
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. We are on to the report of the city manager, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Today, I do have a report. I want to highlight some un-sung heroes from our Public Works Department Facilities Division. While their work often happens behind the scenes, the benefit of their labor is clear. From the moment you walk into a city building, attend a public meeting, or use a restroom at a neighborhood library, Public Works is behind it all, ensuring operations run safely, smoothly, and without disruption. The Facilities Division is an invisible disruption. The Facilities Division is an invisible force, and that is intentional. This means that everything is operating as it should. They respond to urgent calls at all hours, on weekends and holidays, and often solve problems before most of us even know there is an issue. They manage and maintain critical infrastructure and services like plumbing, HVAC, electrical, custodial, security systems, and our audiovisual technology that supports council meetings and public events. One example of their dedication was an incident that I learned about a few weeks ago when my leadership team and I were out visiting the department to meet employees and thank them for their work, otherwise known as my intentional interruptions. This incident, the incident happened on March 12th at the El Viso Branch Library. Late that day, the facilities team received a call indicating that water service to the restrooms had been disrupted and a water leak formed a lake in the library's front lawn. Despite it being the end of a shift, Trade Supervisor Benny Renaga dispatched veteran plumber Jose Huerta, who quickly assessed the problem. Together, they shut off the main water valve to prevent further leaks. Benny immediately arranged for emergency portable restrooms and handwashing stations to support continued library service, which arrived before the library opened the next morning. Also that morning, repair crews were on, all hands on deck with both city and contractor plumbing, plumbers to fix the broken pipe. Benny needed to find a way to remove and properly dispose of about 20,000 gallons of recycled water that had formed the lake. To put things in perspective, that is enough to fill two backyard pools. They initially planned to use a smaller pump, but quickly realized it would take three days to remove the water. Resourcefulness is one of the best public work skills. Benny recalled that there was a plumbing contractor that had a 3,800 gallon water truck that could remove the water quickly and meet the disposal requirements. Although it took six trips and most of Thursday, the job was completed three times faster than by using the pump. In less than two days, service had been fully restored, minimizing disruption to library staff and patrons. Whether it's a city council meeting livestream, a community event, or a routine workday, public work shows up quietly and effectively and with a strong sense of purpose. Their work may be behind the scenes, but their impact is everywhere. Benny and Jose are here today, with us today. I asked them to come. And if you'd both please stand up, I want you to be recognized. I'm, I'm sure that they never envisioned that I would invite them to a city council meeting when I met them. But you and all of the Facilities Division embody the one-team ethos as you work 24/7, 365 days a year to keep our city facilities running. And I, along with the Mayor and City Council and our entire community, are truly grateful for all that you do. Thank you both for your hard work and dedication to the city. I'm proud to work alongside with you. Thank you again. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Jennifer. That's a great story. And Benny and Jose, thank you for your service to our community. You really represent that spirit of public service. And congratulations on your well-deserved recognition from our city manager. Thanks for your service. Appreciate you being here. Okay, we are going to keep moving along here. We are on to item 3.3, which is our Welcoming San Jose Plan 2025 to 2030. And I'll hand things over to Sulma.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Sulma Masial. I'm the Director of the Office of Racial and Social Equity. And I am joined by my colleague, Lidia Bustamante, the Inclusion and Belonging Manager, as well as Megna Majnubar, ready, from the Ready Set Firm, which we enlisted to support the planning efforts of this plan. So today, I'm proud to present the third Welcoming San Jose Plan, our bold and community-rooted vision for ensuring that every resident, regardless of origin, feels seen, valued, and supported in our city. This is not just a policy document, it's a roadmap for building a more inclusive and equitable San Jose. So why is this important? Because San Jose is a global city at heart. It's one of the most diverse cities in the U.S., where 40% of our residents identify as immigrants, and more than half of all households speak a language other than English at home. Our immigrant communities come from all over the world, Mexico, Vietnam, the Philippines, India, China, and dozens of other countries, creating a cultural richness that defines who we are. Immigrants are a vital part of the economic muscle in San Jose. They are job creators, workers, and entrepreneurs, powering industries from high-tech and healthcare to food services and small businesses. In fact, nearly 60% of all business owners in San Jose are people of color, and over half are immigrants, fueling our local economy and generating $1.5 billion in business income in 2021. In that same year, immigrants contributed $26 billion to the local economy through the federal, state, and local taxes they paid and their spending power combined, thereby contributing significantly to public services and infrastructure. Studies show how immigrants, both with immigration status or none at all, contribute more in taxes over their lifetime than they use in public services. But I want to emphasize that immigrants bring more than labor and language. They bring the values of perseverance, resilience, community care, and hope. And during times of uncertainty, our immigrant neighbors show up for one another and for the city, whether through mutual aid, frontline work, or advocacy. The Welcoming San Jose Plan is a shared commitment to ensuring that everyone, no matter where they come from, can fully participate in and contribute to our city. This isn't just a plan for immigrants, it's a plan for all of us. Because when both longtime residents and newcomers succeed, San Jose thrives. On this slide, you'll see the bold vision for the Office of Racial and Social Equity, where, which is, our, our vision is a San Jose where everyone thrives and no disparities exist. Our portfolio contains three strategic areas that are deeply intersectional, and they include the inclusion and belonging work, racial equity, racial and social equity, and disability affairs. And we primarily serve the city organization, creating a healthy organizational culture that embraces the values. In revisiting our last Welcoming San Jose Plan, which was set to expire in the end of 2024, the office partnered with Ready Set, or Megna sitting to our left, and specifically, Megna reviewed the current strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats to the city's welcoming approach, facilitated numerous focus groups and surveys, assessed our alignment with the Welcoming America Framework, which has prepared us for the welcoming recertification process this year, and helped design the strategy for deepening the experience of welcoming in this city. We began with a comprehensive SWOT analysis, and I won't go through all the bullets here. There's also a summary in the, in the attached memo. But it was important to get feedback from immigrant leaders, service providers, and city departments. A key strength is San Jose's longstanding public commitment to immigrant inclusion and racial equity. But we also heard clearly that we must improve coordination across departments and provide more accessible, linguistically and culturally relevant services. Our opportunity now is to deepen our efforts with measurable, community-informed action. So the analysis section of the memo also outlines the methodology that we use to arrive to the plan before you. After considerable input from our stakeholders, we developed a values-centered plan that forges a plan, a path forward toward the year 2030. It's a five-year plan that we could all be proud of. So let me tell you what's in the plan and what's, what it's about. Inclusion is a responsibility we all share, period. This plan lays out how the city, businesses, nonprofits, and residents can work together to remove barriers, expand opportunities, and build stronger connections between communities. At its core, the plan ensures that every person has a clear pathway to belong, succeed, and shape San Jose's future. Building upon the successes and lessons learned from the previous welcoming plans, this third iteration is guided by the Welcoming America standard and aligns with the city's racial and social equity initiatives. The very first plan was far-reaching and aspirational. The second plan was really guided by the work and the strategies of our immigrant-serving community partners. So what's different this time is that this plan builds upon the past efforts and also reflects on some key shifts. Specifically, we want to acknowledge the urgency, acknowledging that this is not a nice-to-have plan. It is essential for San Jose's future, especially given shifting national immigration policies. It's a strength-based approach, meaning that immigrant communities aren't a problem to solve. They're a powerful force for economic and cultural vitality. Reframing the narrative, we are being intentional and moving away from harmful stereotypes and towards celebrating immigrants' contributions. And earning trust, we recognize that trust in government must be built through action, not assumptions. So what does it look like to have a city where everyone belongs? To honor this diversity is to recognize that being welcoming is not just about new arrivals. It's about affirming the dignity and humanity of all who call San Jose home. It's also important to include Native American and Black African-American communities in our efforts to create spaces of true welcoming and belonging. So our city's future depends on policies, leadership, and culture that makes everyone feel included, safe, and able to thrive, regardless of immigration status or country of origin. So the center, this plan is centered around seven strategic focus areas, which you'll see here on this slide and also outlined in the plan with a lot more detail. These are the focus areas, each designed to drive inclusion and belonging across the city systems. Finally, I want to emphasize that this is a collective effort. While the Office of Racial and Social Equity will lead in this space, every department, every partner, and every resident has a role to play. So we know that success comes through collaboration, accountability, and a shared belief that San Jose is strongest when everyone is represented and has voice. This plan invites us all, city leadership, community members, and local businesses, to own our part in shaping a city where everyone truly belongs. So Mayor and City Councilmembers, with your approval, we'll spend the next couple of months working with internal and cross-sector partners to align and coordinate the implementation of the strategies in the proposed plan. We'll continue to provide support, training, and technical assistance to city colleagues as they integrate welcoming strategies into their existing work, and we'll agree, engage cross-sector partners as we've always done. Internally, we're aligning much of the work with the, like I said, the existing work of departments through the racial equity and social action plans. Departments are already doing fantastic work. This is an add-on. This is a strengthening of current work. We'll also keep the public informed through regular briefings, social media updates, and our annual year-end review report. Just to note that this is a living document, and it evolves with our community, and success depends on the shared ownership. Finally, I want to thank my colleagues across the city departments, my deep gratitude to the members of the Office of Racial and Social Equity team, in particular Lidia Bustamante and Barry Nguyen, and the rest of the team up here. Wave. Our community partners are so instrumental for all the work that we've been doing over the last several years and are key on the everyday work we're doing now. And I also want to thank the members of the City Council for your commitment to inclusion and belonging and for honoring the city values through words and action. So what you have before you demonstrates the city administration's commitment to remain steadfast in welcoming work that will endure and be strengthened over the next five years. That includes, concludes our presentation.
Great. Thank you, Sulma. I want to thank you and your team for the work you do to make sure that we've been intentional about designing policies that lean into everybody's strengths and make sure that we continue to be a city that welcomes people from all over the world and harnesses that immense talent and creativity that, as a city of immigrants, San Jose benefits from so much. Appreciate it. Tony, do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, we do. We have Ms. Rayan Mendoza and Brian Darby.
Great. Whoever gets to the mic first, just kidding, no race, but there's no particular order. Go ahead and start, Brian.
I wasn't going to speak on this until I realized, until I realized that this is a, we have to welcome people. I don't understand this administration, the federal administration, that it's us and them. It's all of us. It's about people. The vision statement that was listed up there sounds just like we, the people. That's what the Constitution says. But if you read online, there's a people, there are people serious as hearts attack, heart attacks, that they hate anybody that isn't like them. And I mean, they hate. That's probably giving it too much credit. So I would say that this is tantamount to keeping the city free, keeping our Constitution. And I would help, hope people would welcome people. Thank you.
Hello, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, well, she's not there, and City Council. My name is Ms. Rayan Mendoza, and I'm, I work with Amigos de Guadalupe as an organizing manager. Amigos de Guadalupe urges the Council to adopt this resolution for San Jose Welcoming Plan. The seven core strategies, strategies lays out a plan to give a great vision to how to work as a network to support the most vulnerable residents, especially during this current political climate. The executive orders and actions of the federal administration have struck a widespread of fear in our community. By adopting the resolution, you will be sending yet another strong message. The San Jose welcomes the immigrants and all people. And that we can be a city that we allow immigrant families and everybody to thrive. Thank you for your time. Oh, and thank you for the great work that you guys do. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Tony. Come back to colleagues. Let's go to Councilmember Ortiz.
First off, thank you, Mayor. Before I begin, I want to take a moment to thank our incredible staff in the Office of Racial and Social Equity Department, as well as our many community partners, I know that Amigos de Guadalupe is here, for their dedication in developing this plan of action and advocating for our immigrant community. Of course, I want to elevate Sulma for your leadership and our ongoing partnership between your office and my office. You know, we just hosted a successful Immigration Know Your Rights Town Hall at the Mayfair Community Center. We had some good attendance, and I think it was beneficial to everybody. So thank you. As a council member representing a district where the majority of my neighbors are immigrants, not just Latino immigrants as well, this plan is not just a document, it's a reflection of our community's daily realities, our hopes and our fundamental right to belong in this city. At the beginning of this year, the increasing presence of ICE activity in our East Side neighborhoods created a ripple of fear and uncertainty, which I know everybody knows. Many of our residents were afraid to leave their homes. They weren't taking their kids to school. We heard, you know, reports from the Alamoak School District that a majority of students missed school directly following the ICE presence in, in the district. And people stopped going to work. And, and that fear also transferred over to impacting our local small businesses. I know that Councilmember Dwan just hosted a event this, this month to bring attention to that, especially our small businesses impacted in, in King and Story. It's disrupted livelihoods and put an enormous strain on our local economy, especially our immigrant-owned small businesses that, in the, for the East Side, that's the backbone of our community and our entire economy, number one employer for, for our neighborhoods. And we know, as mentioned in the presentation, that 40% of San Jose residents were born outside of the United States. But it's important to realize that these are not just statistics. These are families. These are humans. These are our friends. These are our neighbors who bring the language, the traditions, and values that really make San Jose a beautiful and multicultural place to live. And it also makes us very unique. That's why Silicon Valley has chosen to be here, and people come from all, all across the world. world, not just the country, but across the world, to be here. It's because of our diversity. And that's why I think this work, the work of Soma and her team, is just so urgent and important, because we're living in a time when hateful rhetoric and harmful policies are trying to make our neighbors feel like they don't belong. But today, our city is choosing to stand up for each other. We choose to build a city where everyone, regardless of language, regardless of immigration status, or where you've come from, feels safe, seen, and valued. And of course, just with the passing of this, that doesn't mean a switch is going to be, you know, switched and everything's going to be safe. This is going to be something we're going to have to continue to work on, and the city has a very important role to play in that. So I just, you know, to my constituents, especially to our immigrant neighbors across the city, I want you to know that I see you. I know that our entire City Council sees you, and I'm proud to fight for you, and I'm committed to making sure this plan delivers for everyone, our entire city. So yeah, let's pass this plan, and let's keep building upon a San Jose where everyone belongs. And I guess I got a motion, right? So I will motion to, I guess, approve, approve this report. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, council member. Let's go to Councilwoman Komet next.
Thank you for your report. And, you know, I really want to say, unless you're native, we're all from somewhere else, right? And I am so tremendously proud of the values that you have in the welcoming plan and the work you do. I really like the internal work that you're doing, as well as with your cross-sector partners, because that's how we can engage everyone in the community, as well as everyone here in the city of San Jose. And I appreciate it. I know that it's not easy work sometimes, but I also think that it is such important work. It really is, because it permeates throughout everything that we do. So I just wanted to say thank you, and I wanted to say how proud I am to be here in the city of San Jose, to be able to have this and share it with others.
Thanks, council member. Let's go to Councilwoman Condellis.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a brief moment to thank Soma and the Office of Social and Racial Equity for the work to this point in bringing this resolution to us. You know, I think with the unprecedented levels of uncertainty we have at the national level, you know, equipping our residents and letting them know that the tools that are available to them is pivotal. So I look forward to adopting this resolution today, the next steps, and collaborating with the community. So thank you.
Great. Thanks, Councilor. Appreciate my colleagues' comments, and again, the work Soma and you and your team are doing. Thank you for this plan. I think we are ready for a vote.
Motion passes ten to one with Mulcahy absent.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We're on to item 3.4. This is actions related to the Market Street Garage Improvements Project. Our Director of Public Works, Matt Lesch, tells me he's got a couple slides, and then we'll go to public comment.
Mayor and Council, I'm Matt Lesch. I'm the Director of Public Works. I'd like to briefly talk about this project, because I know there's some questions that might be out there, so I'll just talk through them, and hopefully we can answer. This is a relatively straightforward construction project, as far as we're concerned, but also this is also a public arts project that has some importance in location and timing. So this is the Market Street Garage. So what you'll see is this is a Market Street Garage, San Pedro Garage, is a six-story garage. It was built in 1960, and so there's some repairs that need to happen, and there's also some public art that's going to be included. So what will be included in this project is we're going to demolish in the outside panels, and then we have to repair and repaint. There's a bunch of, some of the cross bracing, there's some things that need to be repaired in terms of earthquake and seismic preparedness, and also some lead paint that needs to be abated in that area. So we're including all that. There's electrical installation to support a potential public art lighting. There's a bunch of structural attachments that need to be made available to this. They'll fabricate a public art facade, and then some of the bid-alts that were included, bid-alternatives that are included in this proposal, is to have install perforated metal curtain wall, which over on the stairwell, when there's some driving rain, it drives rain like right into the stairwell, so all the people using the stairwell get soaked. And so it's best to kind of screen them from that. And then there's some areas of heavy ponding up on the roof, so there's some plumbing included in this. So what the heck are we talking about? And so on the outside of the garage, there's some failing pieces, and so we need to get in there. And there's an art piece that's proposed, that's worked with our partners in OEDCA and the Department of Transportation, who operates the garage, is to make this an amenity and really beautiful. Another look at this, and I know the first thing everybody's going to say is, "There's cars on San Pedro." This rendering was done some years ago, before there was no cars on San Pedro. So just before you all tease me and reprimand me for that mess, but so on San Pedro, there are no cars planned, but this is just a rendering for what the art image might look like. Another slice of it could be from the San Pedro side. Yes, I know there's still cars on San Pedro. There are no cars planned on San Pedro in this project. It's just an image of what could be up on the sidewalls of, or will be on the sidewalls in terms of the public art rendering. The rough schedule for the project is, you'll hopefully be awarding it today, and this is a little bit special, and I'll talk about it in the recommendation, and construction will start in July, and you're like, "Holy cow, lots of stuff's happening in 2026." And so the plan is to complete the San Pedro side construction by December 31, 2025. At the same time, our partners and friends in OEDCA are negotiating with the artist to begin work at that time. So if they can achieve the public art facade done by March 2026 with a goal, it was begin, I'm sorry, pause artwork being started in March 2026, and then with a goal of completing by the World Cup. If that's not achieved, they'll stage the installation of that afterwards. The beneficial use for this, this has strung out for quite some time, is at the end in September 2027. Because we have to have some pauses in there, let the artists get in and do their work, and so forth. The cost for the project, the project delivery cost is 1.7 million. The construction cost is just over 6 million, so that's the public works piece. The public arts piece is what's going with the artist in negotiation with OEDCA is 1.8 million, and there's a contingency just under a million for us, just in case something should happen or we find in the garage. So we're all ready to go in terms of project costs. So the recommendation in front of you, and this is what's a little bit unique. Typically, we bid these projects out, and then they're awarded to a contractor. We've bid this twice, and so the market has given us indication of what they think this will cost. And we were unsuccessful in our bidding to get a contractor due to some informalities. And so what we've done is, before us, we're leveraging Charter Section 1218H, which allows us to bring to you a recommendation for direct award to one of the contractors. And so that contractor is included in this mix, and so with plant construction, they are one of the bidders, and due to some idiosyncrasies in their second bid, we've negotiated with them the pricing for this contract. So we believe that they will be successful, and we can achieve this by the dates. They're eager. They've been very responsive, and so they're very eager, and they understand, and I believe they're actually watching, that they're very eager to get going on this. And so we're also asking you to adopt a resolution, asking the city manager to negotiate and execute the contract with the artist, Bush Design, for the 1.8 million dollars. And then under Charter Section, should know, because under Charter Section 117, 1217H, if no bids are received, the City Council may re-advertise or have the project done after no further complying competitive bidding requirements. This is what allows you to do what's going on today. So while we're taking conversation, let's go back to this. Ready for questions?
Great. Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it. Tony, do we have any public comment?
I have no cards.
Okay. Let's come back to the council.
I'll move approval of this contract.
Great. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Can you put up the slide with the timeline again? I have some, so are you saying the garage will be fully functional in 2026 when our big events are here? That the construction will be phased in and stopped and phased in and stopped so that the garage will be available?
Can we get to the, can I, let me progress in the, get to, if you put on, if you put it on the schedule slide, please? I apologize for my brevity. I was attempting to get through the presentation as quickly as we could. So it was here.
There you go.
I apologize for misspeaking, so if it was unclear. We will not pause construction altogether on the site, and we will have limited intrusion into the parking spots. There will be some, because as they work through the different areas of the garage, they'll take up a few parking spots, and we've coordinated this with DOT. There will be a few spots in the areas that the construction crews are working or for placing equipment while they work there, but it will not be a static place where there's a whole pile of them constantly out of circulation for the period. But there will be some parking spots, and it'll be coordinated with DOT operations and so forth. And so probably the other thing that people might be thinking is, what about the pedestrians down below? We will have a covered walkway, so the sidewalks throughout the duration will be available to all the pedestrians around all sides of the garage.
Okay. So to put it a different way, the garage will be accessible during 2026. There may be a few spaces that are blocked for equipment and that sort of thing.
Yes, ma'am.
But for the most part, the parking garage will be available.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell me what the, thank you. Can you tell me what the status of the elevators are?
That is a question.
Are they under repair? They're broken, or they were. Are they, have they been fixed?
It's a great question. I'll confirm with staff, and maybe they'll be hitting me up soon enough on Teams, and I'll find out.
That.
I don't have the information at the top of my head. Does DOT know off the top of their head? If not, I can get you the information.
Okay. And I would hope that we can, I don't know where, maybe you could give me some feedback, Matt, as to where it is in the process of the elevators, because we're not in ADA compliance now, and I'm not sure how we will be. We do, you can get a little golf cart from your car down and back up, but that's kind of problematic for some people, so we really need to get those elevators going.
Yes, ma'am.
If you could let me know.
I will.
I appreciate that.
I will follow back up on that.
Totally supportive. Can't wait for it to be with the artistic design around it and fully functioning when it's going to happen. Thank you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Let's go to Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Matt, for the presentation. Definitely always supportive of renovations, especially when they include public art. I guess my questions are just in regards to, I saw that you guys have a diagram or mockup of a design. Has that, has there been discussions about their design? Because I'm just thinking, it's public art. Is there going to be a public process? I know that Councilmember Salas is no stranger to that process, since there's been a discussion in his district for Pecesto Park. So I just want to make sure that, you know, I know that's not your wheelhouse, but I just want to make sure it's happening.
Hi. Good afternoon. Carrie Adams Happner, Director of the Office of Cultural Affairs. Thank you for the question. So like all public art projects driven by the city, there is a very public process associated with this. There was a public process to select the artist, and then we went through community meetings, as well as public art committee meetings. And so if you look at page nine, you'll see the extensive process that we undertook for this, and I'm looking at about nine meetings.
So you've already had nine meetings, or you're going to have nine meetings?
Oh, we've already had them.
Interesting.
Yeah. That informs the design work, so we collect ideas from the community about what they'd like to see at that site, and then we take it through the public process.
Okay. I know art can mean a lot of different things to different people. We could look at this design, and we could come to our own assumptions. Do you have any context to like what the artistic meaning is behind what we're looking at?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
So the artwork is inspired by the diverse history, landscape, and people of San Jose. Visually, it will feature an abstract composition of color and light, interwoven with industrial materials, including aluminum, steel, and light-emitting diode elements. So it's definitely like the ability to integrate and weave together different colors. And if you are familiar with the mural that's on the street in San Pedro Square.
That's right.
That artist took cue from this design, knowing that it was going to be installed.
Okay. All right. So the design's already approved, then? It's going forward? Okay.
Yes.
All right. Well, it's not my district, so I'm not going to comment on it, but hey, I get it. I like it. People have different perspectives. Thank you.
And I know you didn't ask this, but I want to add, it'll be beautiful and exciting, both by day and night, despite that it's illuminated, so it'll have a great look during the day.
Nothing wrong with the design. I'm just, you know, I'm used to like designs reflecting the neighborhood, but this is downtown. It's kind of like a hustling, bustling area, and this kind of has like a futuristic, you know? I don't know if I'd want this like in the middle of the Mayfair community, but maybe in downtown, that's a good idea. So, thank you.
So you're saying it has a certain vibe that isn't necessarily a D5 vibe, but it's more of a D3 vibe?
I don't, I'm not saying that.
I don't know.
Don't get me, spotlight's here, so I don't want that documented.
Fine. Okay. Fine.
It's a great design for the record. Thank you.
Good enough.
We have an initiative. It's called Illuminating Downtown, so it's part of an overall initiative to illuminate, you know, structures within our downtown core. So it's definitely in alignment.
Thank you. The mayor had to step out, so I am assuming his role. Matt, do you have an answer to my question?
More information about elevators than you'd ever want to know has been flying into my phone. So as of right now, both elevators are up and running according to DOT operations. One of the projects was to upgrade both elevators. One of the elevators was already complete. The other one is waiting a state inspection. So yes.
Thank you for that update. I truly appreciate it. Thank you. Councilmember Salas.
And Matt, you know I'm going to be riding up both of those elevators this weekend, just to make sure.
I expect to be told otherwise, if you're.
Hey, Matt, I know how hard it is to get things done and how hard it is to build things, but I'm looking at this picture on my screen right now, and it really looks good. But you're talking that this is going to not be operational until well after the events of 2026. You mentioned a pedestrian construction walkway. In the drawings, is there something that certainly wouldn't be this attractive, but that's going to be the focal point of a lot of people going? And has it been well thought out, what that construction walkway is going to look like?
I guess that's also subjective in terms of how well thought out it's been. We're going to endeavor to make sure that this is as useful, pedestrian-friendly, and attractive as we can. It will be a construction site, but the whole idea is that the San Pedro side is done by the time, by the end of the calendar year. That's the goal in terms of the heavy construction bit that we are concerned with. And then it will, that part of it will, for lack of a better word, pause until March if the successful negotiations with OEDCA. And so there'll be, during the period of the beginning of 2026, the hope is that we'll be as pedestrian-free of obstacles. There will be, again, that canopy during the heavy construction, whether, I think we could see how it looks in that beginning part of construction to see what we can do if we take it down or leave it up. I don't know that that's been finally discussed.
So are you saying that, I may be misunderstood, because you were very brief.
I tried to be.
So you're saying that even by the events of 2026, it's on the San Pedro side, it may look something like this?
I believe it's possible, so by, from December to March, the goal would be that if they're able to successfully negotiate with the artist to achieve this, that they would start that in March, and then with the goal of being done with the San Pedro side by the World Cup. That's the goal, or a goal, to see whether it's achieved. That's a different story in terms, because it won't go forward if it's not going to be done by then, during that piece, during that window.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing no hands, let's vote.
Motion passes ten to one with the mayor absent. I'd also like to say that Councilmember Mulcahy indicated he would like to vote yes on 3.3. I didn't want to interrupt this item to announce that. So 3.3, for the record, is 11-0 on that vote, and 3.4 is 10-1 with the mayor absent.
Okay, great. Moving on to item 5.1, report on bids and award of contract for resurfacing. Do we have a presentation?
No, we do not.
If not, do we have any public comment?
I have no cards. Sorry, I have no cards for this item.
Is there a motion or comments from colleagues?
Move for approval.
Second.
Seeing no other hands, let's vote. Seeing no other hands, let's vote.
Motion passes 10-1 with the mayor absent.
Okay, moving along to 6.1, San Jose Clean Energy Program's Roadmap Status Report. I see Lori in the box, so we must have a presentation.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. We do have a short presentation. I am Lori Mitchell, I'm the Director of the Energy Department and very pleased today to be joined by Kate Ziemba, she's our Senior Environmental Program Manager, and Josh Shannon, he is our Senior Power Resource Specialist. Just as background today, we'll first go through a little bit of background on our program's roadmap. We will preview our current programs and then talk a little bit about our program's scoring and community input, which informed our recommendations for fiscal year 25-26. So just as background, when we launched San Jose Clean Energy in 2019, we started a comprehensive stakeholder engagement process to develop our program's roadmap, and it was adopted in 2021 by City Council. And the program areas that you see below correspond with the city's pathway to carbon neutrality, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kate Ziemba.
Thank you, Kate Ziemba, Senior Environmental Program Manager. So we are currently implementing eight programs for San Jose Clean Energy customers. We recently sunset three programs, including two energy efficiency programs funded by a grant from the California Public Utilities Commission, and we're set to launch three more programs by the end of the fiscal year. The City Council approved a budget of up to $12 million for customer programs in fiscal year 2024 to 2025, and about half of the program's budget this fiscal year comes from external sources. This is our first big year for program expenditures, and we have launched or are in the process of launching our foundational programs like Eco Home Rebate. We're learning a lot as we scale up. So here are some of the impacts of our programs through 2024. We estimate we've saved $35 million kilowatt hours, which is the same as the annual usage of more than 7,000 homes. We estimate 19,000 metric tons of CO2 avoided and 14.5 million in lifetime customer savings. Switching gears now to how we arrived at our program recommendations for fiscal year 25-26. We want to create energy programs that our community wants and needs. We have a staff member who is dedicated to community engagement and conducting needs assessments. We also receive input from the Climate Advisory Commission and collaborate with other CCAs and utilities to understand their most impactful programs. So we put program ideas through our scoring framework to help prioritize. We calculate scores for program ideas using five metrics that map to our council-approved guiding principles, which are greenhouse gas reductions and prioritizing electrification in areas with low adoption and customer savings. All these carry the greatest weight. And our recommendations for fiscal year 25-26 reflect the highest scoring programs. So for fiscal year 25-26, we are recommending offering 15 programs for San Jose Clean Energy customers, including four new programs. We recommend spending a maximum of $14 million, and 1.5 million of that would come from external sources. This represents an increase in ratepayer spending of $6 million compared to 24-25. Implementing our program recommendations in fiscal year 25-26 will result in avoiding an estimated 65,000 metric tons of CO2, or about 1.3% of San Jose's total emissions community-wide in 2021. Our recommended $14 million programs investment is estimated to create $37 million in lifetime customer savings. For context, $37 million is roughly the same amount as the savings we project from our rates in calendar year 2025. And now Josh will go over each of our recommended programs in detail.
Thanks, Kate. Hi, everyone. Josh Shannon, Senior Powers Resources Specialist focusing on transportation electrification programs. I'll walk us through our different program areas, starting with vehicle electrification. We recommend having five vehicle electrification programs in the next fiscal year. Starting off, I'll talk about the DC Fast Charging Hubs Pilot. This pilot will allow a developer to come onto city property, including libraries and community centers, to install chargers, own and operate those chargers, and make sure that there's affordable chargers available in charging deserts. Next is our Multifamily EV Charger Incentive Program. This program provides incentives for property owners to install chargers at multifamily properties and ensures that there's charging available at those sites. We expand, we recommend expanding this program to make sure more of those projects cross the finish line. Next is our award-winning EV Education Program. This EV Education Program provides ride and drives and other educational experiences in communities that have lower uptake of electric vehicles. And then we have two new vehicle electrification programs. First is the Residential EV Incentive. This program allows San Jose Clean Energy customers to receive a point-of-sale rebate as a discount when they purchase or lease newer used EVs from participating car dealers. And lastly is our EV, Recommended EV Concierge or EV Advisor. This EV Advisor provides advisory services to customers looking to transition to an electric vehicle, connects them with incentive programs, and helps them with stacking incentives, and ensures that their experience is seamless. Next, we'll talk about our building electrification programs. Similarly, we recommend offering five building electrification programs for the 2025-26 fiscal year. This past December, we launched two building electrification programs, the Eco Home Rebate and the Eco Home Payment Plan. Eco Home Rebate provides incentives for heat pump, water heaters, and heat pump HVAC along with other electrification technologies. This program has been very successful and popular, and we recommend continuing to offer this program. Next is our Eco Home Payment Plan, which supports the Eco Home Rebate and provides zero interest financing and on-bill financing with terms of up to five years. We're going to continue processing loan applications and monitoring repayments through the rest of this fiscal year. Next, for workforce development, we are currently concluding our stakeholder engagement for workforce development programs, and we're planning to come to council soon with our recommendations there. And lastly, for building electrification, we have two new program recommendations, similar to the electric vehicle programs we, I previously mentioned. First is heat pump education, which would increase awareness of heat pump technologies and electrification technologies, and provide workshops for property owners and homeowners to electrify their buildings. And next is our Home Electrification Advisor, similar to the EV Advisor, a concierge service that supports folks in their electrification journey, and even goes as far as to create electrification plans for their homes or buildings. Our next program area is Distributed Energy Resources. Our recommendation is to continue offering four programs in this area. First up is Solar Access, which provides low-income customers with a 20% bill reduction to access solar energy. And next is Peak Rewards. Peak Rewards pays people to reduce their usage during peak hours or during grid events and grid emergencies. We're looking to shift this program towards automation this fiscal year, kind of tapping into smart thermostats, EV charging, and batteries, and accessing them as, to help the grid during those emergencies. Next is our Residential Battery Storage Incentive Program. We're looking to launch this program this spring, and it would incentivize customers to adopt battery storage technologies for their homes. We'd also incentivize these customers to enroll in Peak Rewards and use these batteries as grid assets. And finally, we have our Residential Super Off-Peak Rate Pilot. This pilot launched this past fall and incentivizes customers with reduced rates to shift their electricity use into the hours of 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM when the grid is flush with solar. And finally, we have our rate program, our program-specific rates. Here we have Electricity Bill Relief, which helps reduce the risk of disconnection for vulnerable households. We recommend expanding this program to around 1,000 households and incorporate lessons learned from the 2024 pilot. Yeah, and that brings us to our recommendation, which is to accept this update and approve the proposed programs, and finally authorize entering into contracts with consultants and CBOs to implement the programs outlined in the table shown on this slide. And we are open to questions.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. Tony, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak?
Yes, I'm going to call your name, again, no particular order. David Heindl, Vince Sugru, Brian Darby, and Jordan Moldow.
Mr. Mayor, who's not here, and council members, thank you. I'm David Heindl. I'm here today on a small piece of this item. I wear many hats, it seems like, but today I'm here on behalf of the District 10 Leadership Coalition and our working group having to do with gas leaf blowers. One of the memos that you had on item three talked about development of Electric Leafblower Rebate Program and return to council for approval when it is ready to be deployed. We've been working on this at our working group for some time now, and we have representatives from four council districts and a petition with over 1,500 members. And we've been noodling on this idea for a long time, and we have some ideas about how we think we could implement it during this fiscal year with an idea of bringing something back to the council in the fall. I don't know who to talk to in the city about this other than this esteemed group in front of me or the esteemed group over here, but we think we have a way where we could get this moving forward this year. Everybody knows gas leaf blowers are horrible, and both the greenhouse gas effects, the noise, the pollution, and everything else, and we've been thinking about it now for four, five years, and we'd really like to know how we could help implement that and move it forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Vince Sugru, and I'm a State Legislative Director with Sheet Metal Workers Local 104. We are the HVAC union in Northern California, and we have hundreds of members who are San Jose residents, and we train over 1,000 folks right now off of Lundie Place in North San Jose. I want to bring your attention to the memorandum from District 4. Want to thank Councilmember Cohen, who has raised an issue that is really important to us, and I really want to acknowledge the work that staff has done in reaching out to community and reaching out to us. We do everything from commercial buildings with heat pumps to single-family residential units, and what is proposed in front of you is the opportunity to have formal recognition for high-road contractors in this space. These are contractors that provide benefits, not just to their employee, but to employees' families, that participate in joint labor management programs and provide workers with a modest pension and retirement. This contractor badge would be associated with contractors who are affiliated with the high-road model, and in working with, I want to give a shout out in particular to both Kate and Leslie, who have been very patient with us as organized labor, as they learn more about us and they learn how we can work in synergy. You know, we see San Jose Clean Energy as such a positive thing, and we really see this moving forward in a really positive way, so I just want to give a shout out to that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, Jordan Moldow, District 3. I'm a member of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, but I'm here speaking on behalf of myself. Thank you for the report. Everything in here is very important, very good work. In terms of the EV rebates, that's a good program, and definitely we should get people in electric vehicles, but I really want to ask that we also include rebates for electric bicycles and electric scooters as part of that EV rebate umbrella. I definitely don't want to downplay the good that happens when someone trades out their gas car for an electric car, but the benefits are limited. You're still driving on the road, you're still producing emissions in terms of rubber particulates, and they're heavier, so they're doing more damage to the streets, which means we need to refresh the asphalt more frequently. Electric bikes, on the other hand, can be absolutely transformational and life-changing for folks, especially cargo electric bikes, where you can carry, you know, one or two kids on it, you can carry all of your groceries. You could do a lot on an electric bicycle, and especially cargo bicycle, and even on electric scooters, you can get a lot done. And in order to meet other city goals, like reducing vehicle miles traveled, I think it's imperative that rebates for electric bikes and scooters be included within that overall program. And also, just in general, as we are pushing for electrification of vehicles, we should just put bikes more at the forefront. I wasn't able to attend the ride and drive that happened a few weeks ago, PayPal Park. I did hear that there were electric bikes available to try, according to the Eventbrite link, but none of the advertising talked about the electric bikes. It was all about the cars, so if I wanted to try an electric bike, I might not even realize that I can go to that event and try it out. So I really hope that we can put bikes and scooters more front and center in terms of our education and in terms of our rebates. Thank you.
Next speaker.
That's breathing, that's why we're doing all this electrification, because I remember the smog in the 60s and the mid 70s. You couldn't breathe during the summer, you just couldn't, you know, and I think the electric bikes, I just bought an electric bike, and they are healthy. I went from 307 down to, I'm about 225 now, got another 25 pounds to go. So there's that, but we want to breathe. Personally, I don't have any children, but I have this strange feeling that I want to see other children have a planet to live on, and it really is that serious. It's an extinction-level event, and it is not a foregone conclusion that our species is going to make it, it really isn't, so we need to take it real seriously.
Back to council.
Great, thank you, Tony. Appreciate the staff report. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for covering there for a few minutes. Let me turn to Councilmember Cohen.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you, staff, for all the work at this point, up to this point. I'm really excited that we're able to offer a full suite of programs this year for the first time. We are, as people might know, many years behind Silicon Valley Clean Energy and Peninsula Clean Energy, which of course are, have been in existence longer than we have, so we've now gotten to the point where we can offer this full suite of tools, and similar to what they're already offering their residents, so I'm excited about that. These are important tools as we set out to achieve our goals of being carbon neutral by 2030 and addressing the climate urgency that we declared in 2018 as a city, and also help our residents make this transition that is going to be required of them in their appliances and also EVs, since by 2030 and 2035, there'll be milestones required by the Bay Area and by the state for electrifying, so we need to help our residents be able to get there and these promotions do that. I have some questions for you. The first, and I've asked this, as we've seen this presentation many times, one of the items on here is multi, is an incentive for multifamily EV charging, and I'm just going to sort of make this pitch one more time that I make every time about thinking outside the box on multifamily EV charging. There are clearly benefits to wiring spaces for people, but there's challenges to wiring spaces. It's expensive, and it's hard to properly meter and charge people for their electricity use, whereas there are now companies out there that are offering these kind of roving EV charging devices, where they have a single location where the device gets charged, the sort of robotic vehicle can move around, and as long as you leave the wire connect on your car and you have an account, it will drive to your car and charge your car. I think this will be a much more cost-effective way for existing multifamily residences that don't have charging-ready spaces to upgrade, and presumably we should be able to offer incentives that are actually going to help get much further for a program like this. So have you yet looked into any of these?
Thanks for the question, Councilmember Cohen. Upon your recommendation, we've met with the company that you've mentioned before and looked into this upon other companies. The technology's not quite there yet where we would feel comfortable incentivizing them right now, but they're on our radar, and we want to continue looking for cost-effective solutions for multifamily.
Okay, I hope that in the next couple of years, some of these companies, Juul Labs, Evar Parkey, there's a number of them that are offering building this technology, and as it is with all these things, within a year or two, I hope that, I expect that they'll be, this will be ready, and we ought to be, we ought to be on top of that and be a leader on that, in that area. There was a question about electric bikes. Have we considered how we might incentivize that in addition to electric cars?
Yeah, we've been putting a lot of thought into e-bikes and incentivizing those to reduce vehicle miles traveled. I'm currently trying to find sources for greenhouse gas emission reductions due to the adoption of e-bikes, and there are some really great programs out there operated by Colorado and the city of Denver that have incentivized the adoption of thousands and thousands of these products. Right now, there's still just not enough data for us to support a program like that that doesn't have the backing to show the greenhouse that doesn't have the backing to show the greenhouse gas emission reductions from those types of programs. Once we can get a great data source that shows that, I'd be, I would love to fund a program like that.
Yeah, that being said, it is certainly something we have looked at, and other CCAs have, you know, invested in programs for e-bikes, so we'll take another look at it and then come back to you with recommendations.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I mean, maybe, I mean, obviously, the goal here is to maximize greenhouse gas emission savings per dollar spent. Obviously, switching from a traditional bike to an e-bike isn't saving greenhouse emissions, but my, obviously, I think the truth of the matter is, e-bike users are more likely to be removing, reducing trips in a car rather than reducing trips on a regular bike. This gets more people into bikes, using our bike lanes and commuting in other ways and getting cars off the road, so just something to think about. I assume you're well aware of that. So I just want to ask a few questions related to, or just clarify a couple of things related to the memo that I co-authored, and I thank my co-authors for joining me on this. Obviously, the transition that we're talking about will require a lot of skilled workers, and we've talked a lot about how we do an inventory of all the homes and businesses in the city to understand what needs they're going to have. Have we started that process, or are we thinking about how we might start the process of understanding, and maybe this is the question for the next item on Climate Smart, but how we understand what homes are ready for upgrades and which ones are not, and how we'll get there?
Thank you, councilmember. Yes, so we, the Environmental Services Department, starting the Building Electrification Framework Study that goes into detail with our building stock, and so that's a couple of years old, and we are going to be turning our attention back to that and engaging our contractors more, since they're the ones through our rebate program who are out visiting folks' homes and understanding conditions, and so we will be starting more engagement with them to understand that.
And I'd also just like to add, we've been meeting with the Air District quarterly for the last couple of years to understand the new regulations better, and, you know, you're right, there's a tremendous need in the community for that, and that's why we're proposing launching the Eco Home Rebates and really helping our homeowners through that electrification process, because those regulations are going to be happening fast, and through that process, we're also advocating for exemptions and other pathways to make sure that our residents are prepared for that and also electrifying as much as we can.
Yeah, I mean, I've been considering ideas like, you know, some kind of internship program where we have people going around, you know, going door-to-door and understanding what homes need work. What we want people to do is, when their water heater dies or they need a new furnace, that they choose or they're ready to be able to buy the electric appliance, because in an emergency situation, they're going to buy, do the easiest thing. They're not going to do, if it takes an extra day or two to upgrade their electrical panel, they're less likely to do that. So knowing in advance which electrical panels need upgrade and all that will be very important for this work to be successful, so we ought to, should certainly be thinking about that. And then, you know, the comment, the item in our memo is focused on work that I know you're already doing, talking to them about, talking to contractors. It's not just about HVAC contractors, but electricians and other contractors out there, and being able to, you know, let people know in a list of qualified contractors which ones meet certain high-road standards, and I don't need to take a lot of time asking the question, but I just, you can confirm you're already have had, been having those conversations and figuring out how that might work.
Yes, we have been meeting with several of the unions, and we plan to bring forward a workforce development program focused on building electrification in the next few months, and I'm happy to take your recommendation and implement that badge.
Okay, thank you. And then the last question was about leaf blowers. Can you just describe a little bit about where you stand? I think it's, for those who haven't heard about the details in that yet, it's pretty exciting what you've been working on, so can you give a brief overview?
Yes, thank you. So we were, when we reported the status report in November to the Transportation and Environment Committee, we were directed to speak with more landscaping companies to understand the future design of a leaf blower program that they would partake in, and so we've enlisted the Latino Business Foundation to help us do that work, and we've spoken to 16 different companies and now have a pretty good idea of our program design in mind. And we've also receiving support from the American Green Zone Alliance, which is an advocacy group for electric lawn products, and they will help us provide a workshop to landscaping companies in early summer where, because to use the electric equipment does require different techniques, so they will educate on that. And then we will also plan to share our future program design options, which could include both a rebate for purchase and then a higher level for trade, for those who want to trade in any gas equipment, so it'll have both pathways to be flexible. And so we'll hear at that event any reactions to what we're thinking.
Thank you, and I know there's going to continue to be pressure on us, just like neighboring cities, to eventually ban gas leaf blowers. I think the better approach at this point is to help incentivize that transition, have that program in place before we have that conversation, and then have the conversation later. But I want to just commend you and your team, because the whole idea of a trade-in program was really key in this whole discussion, which was not something even that I had contemplated or that many of us had contemplated. The idea of getting a gas leaf blower out of circulation while also giving them enough financial resources to buy an electric leaf blower with some backup batteries, I think will go a long way, and when I've spoken to somebody in my neighborhood who's been, who does work, they seemed very interested if they knew that this program was there for them. So with that, I'm going to move the memo that I co-authored with Councilmembers Salas, Mulcahy, the mayor, and Councilmember Campos.
Great. Thanks, council. Do you have a second? A second from Salas. Great. Thank you, councilmember. Let's go to Councilmember Kome.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate some of the programs that, you know, I know that in my community, I have a lot of seniors who are very concerned about the costs, so the rebates really, really are going to help. I was curious to find out, how do you track usage and whether or not you, in the future, would do sort of a dashboard? Because your rebate page is really great, but, you know, it's hard to tell, okay, which ones are the ones that are really robust and going and all of that versus, you know, those that, I know you're going to exit some of the older programs, and so I was just wondering in terms of, especially in areas where, you know, there's the multifamily EV chargers and assistance expansion. I know that, you know, looking at areas where there are no chargers, I know that was an effort that was done a few years ago, so I'm just wondering about usage, and how do you track that?
Yeah, that's a great question, councilmember, and so we do have a very robust tracking mechanism of, you know, the performance of all our programs internally, and certainly we can reach out and share that information with you and look into making some of that more publicly accessible as well, but happy to follow up and provide you more details.
That'd be great. That'd be great, because I think that as we start, you know, thinking about the new regulations and what needs to be done to electrify, it'd be great to know where things are working well and where there are needs that perhaps people don't even know, right? So I think that for future, it'd also help us, you know, sort of amplify the availability of what you're doing, so, thank you.
Thanks, councilmember. Let's go to Councilmember Salas next.
Yeah, the gentleman who talked about the, taking some, we've all known about leaf blowers for so long, and it's taken so long. It brings up the point, something that's always bothered me that's kind of below the radar is that all of the events we have, and even a lot of the food vendors, the food trucks and the portable food vendors, have generators that just run all the time. They make a lot of noise, they give off tremendous emissions, not only greenhouse gas but particulate matter. Have you looked into that at all relative to where we may eventually, I don't know that the battery technology is all there yet, but we could eventually be able to have something that displaces all those generators that stink up the place, make noise, and drive me crazy at all the events I go to.
Yeah, thank you, councilmember. It's a great point. It isn't something that we have looked into in detail yet, but it is certainly something we can, you know, research further and then bring back recommendations for the council. Yeah.
Thank you, and then I just wanted to mention to my colleagues, and I've talked to you about it, and Councilmember Cohen and I don't fully agree, but we, at my house, I have batteries, solar heat pumps, we put them in a year and a half ago, and I remember the first summer, my wife was, "Yippee, everything's free. We got a fully cool house, everything's free." And then winter came, and our bill went way up, and I wanted to caution you that electrification doesn't always mean your bills will go down, and I think a lot of people have that misunderstanding. And what happened is my wife said, "Wait a minute, what's going on?" She pays the bills, I should, but she does. Anyway, she, we went right into energy efficiency mode, and we were able to bring everything down, but I just wanted to mention that I continue to be disappointed that we do not have an energy efficiency program anymore, and I also wanted to caution you and my colleagues, your bills may go up when you electrify, and it's important to not overpromise as we talk people into electrification.
Yes, councilmember, it's a really good point. It's important that people understand their bill impacts, and so that's part of what we're recommending here with some of the advisor services that we're recommending, so that people can really become more educated on the impacts of electrifying. So yes, it's a great point.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, councilmember. Appreciate that point. It's certainly true, something to keep in mind. Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands. We have a motion on the floor, Tony. Let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, great. Thank you all very much. We'll go to Item 6.2, Climate Smart San Jose Semiannual Report. We also have a staff presentation.
Jeff Provintano, Director, Environmental Services Department. Today's item is an update on our Climate Smart San Jose Semiannual Report. With me today is Julie Benabente, Ramses Madaw, and Kate Ziemba. And with that, I'll kick it off to Julie.
Thank you, Jeff. So Happy Earth Day. Today, we're going to give a quick background on Climate Smart. We're going to do some updates on some of the core activities or community engagement programs and policies, some of which you heard a little bit earlier from San Jose Clean Energy. There's a lot more where that came from, and we also are going to be looking forward at what's coming up in the next reporting period. So I'll talk a little bit about, just a little background here, so our Climate Smart Plan has been in place for over six years now. We also set a carbon neutrality goal in 2021, and we passed a plan to reach the carbon neutrality goal in 2022. That plan identified four key strategies for us to focus on where the majority of our emissions are coming from, and that includes zero-emission vehicles, reducing vehicle miles traveled by 20%, switching our appliances from fossil fuels to electric, and also carbon-neutral electricity. So just in terms of some of our core activities, one of the biggest things that we're working on is bringing funding, external funding and resources to our climate work here in San Jose to supplement the city funding that we have. So we've been working across departments, and we coordinate across departments on a lot of the grant opportunities, and this table shows some of the funding that we have pending execution for the reporting period, which is over $23 million, as well as some of the awards that were executed during the reporting period as well, so that's over $1.1 million that came to the city. And also, some of those, some of that funding is also going towards transit station access and circulation planning, the adoption and implementation of city transit-oriented communities policy, East San Jose public electric vehicle charging infrastructure, EV charging ports, design and construction, and also extreme heat resiliency in the community, so those are just some of the grants that were brought in. And also during that reporting period, we applied for an additional 67, over $67 million in external funding, and we're awaiting some of those, awaiting awards, and then also we are planning to submit for over $8 million in applications for the next reporting period. So in terms of some of the community outreach and engagement that happened during the reporting period, we actually launched a new Climate Smart newsletter. It's an e-newsletter that's going out quarterly now, began in October 2024. It's available in English, Spanish, and Vietnamese, and it's a good way for us to get information out about events as well as more in-depth topics for our community and some of the rebates and incentives and programs that the city offers. We also sponsored, San Jose Clean Energy sponsored an electric home tour, where over 700 people toured homes throughout the region, and of those attending, 31% expressed high interest in adopting heat pump HVAC systems and water heaters within the next three years, so it's a really great way to share information, kind of bring together homeowners directly with other residents in the community to talk about how they went through the process and help people feel more comfortable moving forward. And finally, we have an equitable mobility initiative that is supporting low-income transit solutions. It includes a $1.3 million mobility wallet pilot and a $3.5 million microtransit grant, that was through the Transportation Department. Now I'll pass it on over to Ramses.
Thank you, Julie. Ramses Madu, Division Manager in the Department of Transportation. Changing our transportation system to a multimodal Climate Smart system takes a lot of actions on a lot of different levels. We're highlighting a few different things we've been doing in the last reporting period to talk about that change. One, as Julie already mentioned, we have the East San Jose Equity Mobility Project. This takes a lot of different actions, but includes, excitingly, a mobility wallet, which will help low-income folks who can't otherwise afford to get around money to get bikes, to get transit passes and things like that, to help them get around. Last year was our largest year to date in converting road space over to bikeways. We added 7.4 miles of new bikeways, and we upgraded 32.8 miles. That's converting lanes that were just lines on the side of the road to buffered or protected with our bollards. We're also working to greatly expand our Bay Wheels Shared Bike System. In particular, we've got a bunch of grants letting us expand out to the east, adding a bunch of new bikes and stations, so expanding that area greatly. And I just saw the new statistics today on our usage of that system. San Jose State just got their students' access to that system, and we're seeing something like a 50% to 100% increase at various stations of use of that system. So really excited to see growth in that as well. We also downtown, you know, we have to launch these systems, we have to grow access, we have to change the right-of-way, and we also have to learn to manage our data and systems better. So one thing we're doing downtown is a curb management pilot. You may have seen, there's a bunch of solar-powered new cameras monitoring our downtown curb space. What this is doing is now is giving us an active inventory of how those spaces are being used, when they're being used, and giving us information about how, what kinds of uses are doing that. We're hoping to convert that. We just got a new grant, actually, to go into phase two of that, that will allow us to expand the tracking system and then importantly, start building out hopefully transaction models and enforcement models to improve the use of curbs. And importantly, we also just got a new data subscription to a big data source that allows us to understand travel patterns across the city and across the region in a much more fine-grained way. That's driving what our key performance metric system, that's encapsulated in our Move San Jose Plan, will be bringing a report actually in June to TNE to dive further into how that data is helping us improve our key performance indicators. With that, I'll pass it off to Kate.
Thank you, Kate Ziemba, Senior Environmental Program Manager with the Energy Department. Starting with some updates on three EV charging programs run by the Energy Department. So through the California Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Project, participants installed 197 Level 2 and 32 fast chargers to date at multifamily workplaces and public places. That's 50 more ports that became operational during the reporting period, as we're seeing more projects get finished ahead of the deadline at the end of 2025. In October, we launched a multifamily EV charger incentive pilot, and so far, 11 properties have reserved about $280,000 in incentives for 78 Level 2 ports. And finally, our request for offers for our fast-charging hubs pilot just concluded, and we're evaluating several bids from potential developers to install and operate. and we're evaluating several bids from potential developers to install and operate four to seven hubs at libraries and community centers in areas of San Jose with little to no public charging infrastructure. In terms of carbon-neutral energy, in 2025, customers are receiving 62 renewable energy at 8% lower rates than PG&E on average, and we're on track to offer 100% carbon-neutral energy as a base option by 2030. And to meet that, we continue to invest in new renewable and reliability resources. So far, San Jose Clean Energy has contracted for over a gigawatt of resources. At the end of 2024, the Energy Department sunset two energy efficiency programs funded by the California Public Utilities Commission. Our residential program offered discounts on home appliances and free energy-saving items to income-qualified customers. In total, customers bought 281 appliances and ordered more than 1,000 energy-saving items. Our commercial program provided rebates on HVAC and refrigeration improvements to 778 businesses, achieving 11 million in customer savings and avoiding 35 million kilowatt-hours. In December, the Energy Department launched heat pump incentive programs for San Jose Clean Energy residential customers called Eco Home Rebate and Eco Home Payment Plan. As of February, 325 customers reserved or received more than 1.2 million in rebates, and 25% of rebates have been paid out to customers who live in environmental justice communities. We are on track to achieve our goal of installing 500 heat pumps by the end of the fiscal year. The payment plan provides zero interest on bill financing up to $5,000, and we have 14 approved payment plans with customers as of February. And then finally, we continue to add contractors to our Eco Home network. And I'll now pass it to Julie.
So just to close up on building electrification, the Environmental Services Department ran the Electric Home San Jose Program from April through December 2024. It was kind of a precursor to the Eco Home Program, and it was supported by the city's Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant. So that program, which is now closed, had incentives for 56 project sites, which covered 65 heat pump HVAC systems and nine heat pump water heaters. And out of those project sites, 53, so the majority, were single-family. And those, that funding, the EECBG funding, will continue to support the ongoing Eco Home Rebates Program. And finally, the EST also implemented its second year of beyond benchmarking requirements, covering about 380 out of the 1,700 buildings covered under the city's Building Performance Ordinance. So this requirement began several years after the ordinance was first adopted in 2019, and then applied to covered, and it applies to covered buildings every five years. It requires that larger multifamily and commercial buildings take steps to reduce their energy usage, actually through energy efficiency work, and also can happen through electrification and various other options. They can also choose to do an energy audit to demonstrate compliance. And the compliance rate for this past year was 59% for these beyond benchmarking requirements. So just looking ahead, you can see as we usually have quite a few things coming up and some milestones and some city council items that will be coming to you all. And I think I'll conclude there and go ahead and open up for questions.
Great. Thank you all for the update and all the work you do to make our city climate smart. Tony, do we have any public comment?
Yes, Brian Darby and Jordan Moldau.
I just wanted to ask a quick question. I never thought about the multifamily charging station that Mr. Cohen brought up. I like to do research, and sometimes I might, if you would like that, I'd love to look for some of that stuff. And I have a knack of finding things like that. I support everything they said, and we have to really, the electrification is really important in Climate Smart. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Jordan Moldau, District 3. Thank you for the report. More great work to try and make sure that our CEE mitigates climate change. A couple of great things in the report I wanted to call out. There were a couple of these that we were presented to in BPAC, the Mobility Wallet, the Bay Wheels Expansion. Those are great projects. In addition, if I remember correctly, the fast-charging hubs also includes a pilot of our first-ever public e-bike charging ports. So I'm really excited to see how that works out, and hopefully it's successful, and we make that available in more places in the city. The VMT reduction is a very important goal, and I'm glad that we're building a lot of bikeways, but we need to continually double down on the amount of bikeways that we're building, and also the quality of the bikeways that we're building, and the level of effort we're putting into reducing the effective speed on our roads. Network completeness is key. Having a lot of bikeways is great, but if there's even one missing connection, that is going to discourage a lot of potential riders. And as we see during VIVCA, there are a lot of potential riders. So investing in the bike plan and in Vision Zero is key. I really appreciate that the council adopted the Vision Zero Action Plan, and particularly the extra motion that was added to make our quick builds quicker. So that will be very important for Climate Smart. We get the system that we invest in, and right now, we invest in a lot of car facilities, which means a lot of people drive, and we don't meet our VMT goals. The announcement about the Bay Wheels pilot at SJSU is really encouraging, and I think we need to think more about how we build upon that success citywide. Can we invest in Bay Wheels to reduce the price for everyone so that we get a huge increase in Bay Wheels usage citywide?
Back to council.
Great. Thank you to our public speakers. Let's come back to the council. Councilmember Compos.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to staff for the presentation. You know, it's Earth Day, and I, like my colleagues, am committed to environmental stewardship, climate resiliency, and this is one of those areas where I'm constantly growing in my knowledge, so thank you all for the opportunity to remain a lifelong learner. I have just a couple of quick questions. I understand that the city of Santa Clara has required all new data centers to be 100% carbon-neutral, and that the City of San Jose Clean Energy Department has secured an agreement with Microsoft to use renewable energy. What actions can the city take to ensure new data centers are at least 100% carbon-neutral?
That's a complex question that I think deals a lot with our Planning, Building, and Code Enforcement Department, honestly, in the planning aspect, although we do have a role in reviewing some of the projects that come in, and we were able to work with the Microsoft project to try to look at some of those emissions and how we can bring those down. But I think there's still some work to do there, and we certainly can bring that back to the Planning, Building, and Code Enforcement and see what future steps we can take.
Thank you. Having staff investigate the feasibility of requiring new data centers to use 100% renewable energy would be a great way to stay true to our commitment in our Climate Smart Plan. So thank you for that. That was all.
Thanks, councilmember. Let's go to Councilor Cohen.
Yeah, thank you. I just have one quick question. I don't know if it's quick or not, but it'll be quick for me to ask. How much of the awards pending execution on that slide that talked about money for next fiscal year are federal grants that are at risk? What is, in terms of the funding we're receiving, what do we expect to be receiving, and what do we think will be our danger points as far as resources to continue this work?
Yeah, we definitely, you know, have concerns about some of the funding. Of the 22 million that we have, 95% of that is federal, are federal grants. And there are definitely some that currently are really just frozen, essentially, so we don't know where those will stand, whether we'll actually get those or not. So those are certainly in jeopardy. And then also, just looking at some of the upcoming ones, there's quite a bit that is also federal funding. But there also are state opportunities, and we're looking at some of the other funding sources like endowments and things like that to try to help supplement, since we know that there may not be, we certainly know there most likely will not be as much funding as has been in the past couple of years. It was a bit of a golden year, you know, golden years just due to the Inflation Reduction Act that really had a big focus on climate work.
And the Inflation Reduction Act is still law. Congress passed it, but unfortunately, we have an administration that is anti-science and anti-environment, and plans to just disregard congressional direction to actually invest that money, unfortunately. So I hope we're leaning into the state climate bond and other sources that maybe can replace money that we're going to lose and that we're not going to lose too much momentum in the next few years. Anyway, having said that, I will move acceptance of the report.
Great. Thanks, councilmember. Appreciate that. I don't see any other hands. Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, everybody. Right, we are on to item 7.1, which is our Consolidated Annual Homelessness Midyear Report. Give staff a moment to come down.
Good afternoon, excuse me, Honorable Mayor and Council, members of the public. My name is Omar Passan, Deputy City Manager. I'm joined by several colleagues who will introduce themselves shortly. We are here in follow-up to council direction in November of last year to provide an update about the progress towards initiatives this council approved as part of the fiscal year 2425 budget. Before we begin, I would like to take a moment and thank the members of our teams who are in the community, including Udefy San Jose's staff and Parks, Recreation, and Neighborhood Services, our Housing Department program, data, and outreach staff, our Public Works team who oversees the design and construction of these shelters, planning, real estate, Department of Transportation library staff who connect unhoused people to services, and police and fire departments who have a critical role in the safety of all members of the public, as well as critical roles played by our IT and other departments. Let's just, a quick second here. Okay, well, we'll get it to Matt to advance. All right, we're on that. Over the past several years, the city has worked towards developing a systems approach to addressing homelessness, one that combines and integrates the work of the departments you'll hear from today and many others. Today's presentation offers a comprehensive mid-year update on San Jose's homelessness response strategy, an effort that reflects a deep commitment to operational alignment, dignity in engagement, and responsiveness to public space impacts. Our framework, Engage, Shelter, Clear, Preserve, Restore, remains the tactical backbone of a citywide response that crosses departments, jurisdictions, and sectors. It recognizes that effective homelessness policy must operate across the full housing continuum from prevention to shelter to permanent stability. What's different today is scale and coordination. We've expanded capacity with a path to adding over 1,400 shelter beds, and we're now deploying a more data-driven and proactive approach to engagement. We formalized interdepartmental operations with Targeted Outreach, Waterway Abatement, and the Olive Program to address the growing challenge of oversized and lived-in vehicles. This work is not without its complexity. We face a persistent gap between shelter demand and availability, and we continue to rely on deep partnerships with the county, the state, and community-based organizations while dealing with decreases and uncertainty at the federal level that has historically dramatically under-invested in rental assistance. But the progress is tangible. As you'll hear today, public perceptions are improving. We are reclaiming parks, trails, and waterways while getting people into shelter and housing. Our goal today is not just to report out, but to reinforce the integrated, one-team approach that defines how San Jose is addressing this humanitarian challenge with compassion and clarity. Next slide, please. And with that, I'd like to, to start this process, I'd like to hand it over to Housing Director Eric Solivan to talk about our Engage approach. Eric?
Okay, thank you, Omar. So thank you, councilmembers. So our Engage approach and the tactics that we use to engage in our outreach towards people experiencing homelessness fits into our overall strategy along the housing continuum that I'll talk about briefly here. But first, I want to talk through some of the progress, some of the insights, and some of our next steps that we are taking along the path of engagement. First, our Targeted Outreach Engagement Program has expanded as we have built, brought on 10 outreach workers per council direction from the last budget cycle, and then additional funding that we had reallocated within the budget to expand the outreach team. That team is now engaging in a series and leading the work that Olympia's team does around engagement with our encampments around the city, as well as, two, doing, leading the move-in process with our supportive service providers who are opening up new shelter systems, and then, three, providing a plethora of options, including Homeward Bound, as well as other initiatives to better connect through engagement and encourage continuing shelter options as well as housing options. Two, as we look at overall insights and operational improvements, we continue to address our needs around ADA, as well as making continued alignment with our partners in the Department of Transportation regarding the Olive Program, as we saw successfully the work being done to open up the various safe parking site. And lastly, as we move towards forward with our continuing build-out of the shelter system within the city, as well as our overall alignment with the county while maintaining city needs around local preferences and other issues, we continue to refine our strategies of engagement. And so this strategy fits within our overall strategy and the work that we do around housing. So as you see from the housing continuum, we talked about this a number of times, this is the global strategy, and how do we get to throughput within the system to move our outreach work that we do, our encampment resolution work that we do, and our lived-in vehicles and RVs work that we do. So they fit within the broader strategy. So our Targeted Outreach Program fits within our strategy for engaging of encampments, of setting up more shelters, of providing a plethora of options. Our work around encampment resolution, including shelter, clear, preserve, and restore, helps us connect the various entities and the various departments who support the work around engagement and the throughput into shelter. And then thirdly, our work with my partner, John, and the Department of Transportation around the Olive Program further helps resolve more lived-in vehicles and RVs. So together, this series of tactics underneath our global strategy around resolving our homelessness issue to get more individuals into shelter and then into permanent housing continues to be executed.
Thank you, Eric. So we have three slides here talking about the progress of the construction of shelters and operations, as we hand it off to operations. These three slides, this thing is just the summary here. We have about 1,400 beds, spaces that are being brought on in this calendar year. You'll see both a graphic representation as to where and a list as in terms of quantities of things. We have three opened up presently, either some late last year or the very beginning of this already, with another one opening up just this week, in 10 sites in active construction. Some key insights and some thinkings that we've had, you know, there's lots of things of spits and starts in terms of how we've been going on these things. The early site selection and the design clarity, there's been lots of, we should do this, we should do that, that clarity in decision-making helps us execute quickly and decisively. And locking in that scope wherever a building, and this is true of every construction site, any waffling on what should go where and what things should be included make things slower and harder. And so these external factings in terms of property negotiations or the like make things more challenging and then slower. So these next steps, you'll see lots of construction, we'll see lots of openings, lots of lots of ribbon cuttings as we go through the rest of this year, lots of happy things. We'll finalize the negotiations and implementations with Eric's team in the Housing Department for the five hoteling conversions that will be going on through the summer. And we'll collaborate with different funding opportunities and cost savings and future site reviews. To visually see this, so where it's a little faint, and I wore my tie, hopefully see where the positive things are, where things are built and in progress. And because in Public Works, we like construction, so you'll see the sites around the city in the kind of peach color in terms of where the sites are in progress from south to north, and those that are blue and open, whether it's the different areas that we've already put on the map, and then also things that are already operational and handed over to Eric and team for operating them. And here is the list of actual implemented sites and quantities of beds and spaces and the current listing as to when. Just this week, we have Villa de Loro being opened up. Later on this week, Taylor North, we had a groundbreaking, and that'll be open in June. And then hoteling sites that will be opened up this summer will open up a lot of bed opportunities there while we wait for the larger constructed sites at Seroni Cherry and Route Ferrari. Where Seroni and Cherry, those are more, September is optimistic and very aggressive, we're pushing like all heck to get there. Route Ferrari is a little more solid in that September timeframe. So those are the dates and timelines how we get to the 1429 in terms of bed count.
Thanks, Matt. Beautify SJ and DOT are part of the Clear part of the strategy. As of February, we have conducted 530 abatements and cleared nearly nine miles of waterway in line with the requirements of our approved stormwater permit. We are on pace to meet our goal of clearing 12 miles of waterway along Coyote Creek and have cleared more than six and a half million pounds of trash from encampments throughout the city this fiscal year. In terms of key insights, we have identified a few important lessons. First, combining rapid blight cleanup after abatement, repairing damaged public property and removing graffiti allows for more uniform and complete treatment of locations. We have seen that close coordination and integrating the work of our departments has improved the outcomes overall. Some of our next steps include moving forward with integrating the blight reduction efforts, developing a plan to address high-impact encampment locations, and continuing to refine and align our encampment management approach with the Housing Department. Now shifting to the waterways. This slide gives a sense of where we were at the start of the fiscal year when the City Council gave direction to clean up our waterways to meet our stormwater permit mandate. And this slide shows where approximately 10 miles of clearing work has been completed. Represented in green on this image, the red line and red arrows show where work is upcoming for the remainder of this fiscal year. The work along the waterways has enabled the city to provide updates to the California Regional Water Quality Control Board that we continue to be in compliance with our permit. In 2023, 2024, PRNS was directed to pilot an RV biowaste program, the RV Pollution Prevention Program, or RVP3, as many know it, to remove biowaste from lived-in vehicles to keep it from getting in our streets and into our storm drains. The pilot phase of the program was for 150 vehicles spread across the city. This resulted in the removal of about 70,000 pounds of biowaste. Last budget cycle, City Council directed that we expand RVP3 program from 150 to 600 vehicles. This fourfold increase in the program required scaling of teams to better collect biowaste from those residing in vehicles and to prevent biowaste from being discharged into storm drains and spilled onto streets and sidewalks. This scaling resulted from the massive demand that already existed in the city of San Jose before the pilot began and has resulted in approximately 380,000 pounds of biowaste being collected since the start of this fiscal year. Now I'd like to turn it over to John Risto to share more about DOT's role in the Clear approach.
Thank you, Olympia. John Risto, Director of Transportation. This slide illustrates the three main steps that we took to develop and stand up the oversized and lived-in vehicle enforcement program, or we refer to it as Olive. The program began in the fiscal year 2425, and to the first step of that effort, DOT parking compliance officers conducted a comprehensive citywide inventory of oversized vehicles and lived-in vehicles to assess the full scope of impacts on public streets. The data collection effort required more than 600 hours of staff overtime and resulted in identification of over 2,000 vehicles on the streets, approximately half of which we believe to be lived in. The second step was data analysis, and staff analyzed the findings in alignment with city council priorities such as key factors including proximity to sensitive areas such as waterways, safe parking, or EIH sites, schools and parks, as well as traffic safety considerations like bike lanes and vision zero corridors. The analysis also incorporated fire and police data, including fire-related incidents and crime reports near identified locations, as well as observed levels of blight, including biowaste and environmental degradation. This analysis highlighted and resulted in over 400 unique locations ranging from single-vehicle sites with minimal blight to larger encampments exceeding 50 vehicles and posing significant health and environmental concerns. From the data set, 30 high-priority sites were selected for initial intervention with implementation beginning in January of 2025. Some of the progress that we're showing here on the program, DOT has made significant strides in implementing the Olive program, including standing up and establishing a new DOT service delivery model with additional staff and the equipment that was needed to carry out the program. We completed the inaugural citywide Olive inventory this year and analyzed inventory data to prioritize the 30 high-impact sites that I mentioned previously. We did launch the website and are developing additional public-facing dashboard to enhance transparency. So all the information that will be shown in this thing is really available on our dashboard and website. Since the first Olive site implementation in January 25, through the initial, and through the initial 12 sites, we've seen some things that we've learned from. 97% of the vehicles that we're engaging with in those sites to date have moved voluntarily, which means that we towed very few, so that we're pleased with that outcome. Interdepartmental coordination, particularly between DOT Police Department, Beautify San Jose and Housing Department, has really been effective and essential in trying to make all this stuff work very well. In some cases, vehicle occupants have refused to relocate and vacate their vehicles, which has required an elevated Police Department response in order to get that to be successful. Some of the next steps of the remainder of this fiscal year will include conducting a second citywide inventory of all of the oversized vehicles in the city again, and then an additional and similar data analysis to identify 50 Olive sites beginning for the next fiscal year in July, and reviewing potential implementation of permanent parking restrictions in some of these areas to deter returning vehicles. And then we'll refine the coordination protocols with the City Attorney and Police Department to address issues where occupants refuse to relocate. The maps on the screen now shows where we are to date with the first 30 sites highlighted with the key on the left side of the screen. Ones completed in green, active in red, and orange are scheduled and yellow are pending. To highlight the program impact, the website also features before and after photos of Olive sites. So all of this is available, again, on website so we can keep track of where we are with regard to the program that we're implementing. These, some of the larger and more complex sites such as Columbus Park will be addressed by Beautify San Jose and San Jose Police Department as the timing and coordination details become more available. If we recall, those were the top sites that we had identified, but they remain to be dealt with differently and separately as due to the size and complexity of those encampment areas. I will now turn it back over to Olympia to continue the presentation.
Thanks, John. The City Council directed the preservation of progress associated with clearing the waterways and when building new shelter or safe parking locations. At the time of this memo posted, we had established three no-encampment zones. As of last Friday, we have now established 13 no-encampment zones throughout the city, including areas along the waterway. We've cleared as of today nearly 12 miles of waterway. There are challenges, though. As people sometimes return to these no-encampment zones, PRNS and SJPD work together to have ongoing coverage and do our best to ensure that encampments are not reestablished, but this is an ongoing challenge and a new approach that will take time. This visual presents a zoomed-in portion of South San Jose to help demonstrate the progress and change since the start of the fiscal year. Not only have the people been engaged and new shelters opened, PRNS has coordinated the timing of abatements with housing so that as many people as possible could be offered shelter and also coordinate with SJPD as necessary to help enforce the no-encampment zones. As noted, this is an ongoing effort and a new body of work, so we continue to listen to the community, work with unhoused residents, and seek more opportunities for shelter with our housing partners to help keep these no-encampment zones clear. The final component, let me make sure, the final component of the five tactics we are using to execute on in overall strategy is restore the areas that have been preserved by returning them to their intended use and condition. This is a partnership effort with groups like Keep Coyote Creek Beautiful, South Bay Clean Creeks Coalition, The Trash Punks, as well as many community volunteers. As we move forward, our department, ESD, and external partners like Valley Water are continuing to seek funding in ways to ensure sustained environmental stewardship. I would now like to turn it back over to Jerry to provide some progress and updates on our data.
Thank you, Olympia. Jerry Rutner, Homelessness Solutions Enterprise Manager in the City Manager's Office. As we turn our attention to data and technology, I want to share a few of the results of a periodic community survey conducted across San Jose. While the Full Focus Area Scorecard Report will return in the fall, these insights suggest the public is taking notice of the increased coordinated efforts covered today. This survey experienced the largest single positive change in the public citing homeless issues as the one change to make San Jose a better place to live. Similar improvements related to providing more shelter and further enhancements in cleanup and progress preservation also came in through this survey. Next slide, please. As part of our ongoing commitment to data-informed governance, the city has launched a homelessness data consolidation project. This initiative brings together information across departments, integrating data about homelessness, the programs designed to address it, and outcomes those programs are achieving. By consolidating this information, we are equipping both senior leadership and frontline staff with the tools they need to make more informed decisions. This unified data allows us to correlate trends across departments, enabling a more coordinated and proactive response to the impacts of homelessness throughout the city. It also provides a framework for monitoring the effectiveness of our efforts with regular updates that support continuous evaluation and improvement. In emergency situations, the system enables staff to quickly access multi-departmental information on where and how individuals are occupying public spaces, facilitating faster and more targeted interventions. Ultimately, the homelessness data consolidation project strengthens our ability to deploy resources swiftly and direct services to areas of highest need, ensuring our responses are both effective and equitable. Next slide, please. As we continue to integrate citywide data, one practical example of this data consolidation work relates to prior council direction to identify the most impactful encampments. We are working on a structured approach to quantify and compare the impacts of homelessness across various public systems and spaces. What you see here is a result of a draft framework for an interdepartmental impact rating, which assigns weighted coefficients to different indicators drawn from our consolidated data. These values are preliminary. The final equation will be developed in close consultation with departmental staff and compared against existing impact rating tools to ensure accuracy and alignment with operational needs. Our goal is a shared, data-informed approach that supports coordinated response, precise resource allocation, and consistent evaluation across departments. By visualizing this impact rating geographically, we can clearly identify where the city can most effectively direct its efforts to address unsheltered homelessness. Next slide, please. This slide illustrates a sample of the impact rating heat map, which translates the composite scores into a visual representation across a subset of the city. Areas with a lower impact rating are shown in yellow, indicating relatively minimal strain on public systems and services. As the intensity of impact increases, the gradient shifts to yellow and then purple, highlighting locations where the effects of unsheltered homelessness are most concentrated. These visualizations provide a clear, at-a-glance tool to guide decision-making. It allows departments to quickly identify high-impact areas, coordinate interventions, and allocate resources where they're most urgently needed. The administration was able to leverage work by Ladris using technology originally oriented towards emergency services to develop these impact ratings and visualizations. As we refine the underlying data and coefficients, this visualization will become an increasingly powerful instrument for proactive, equitable and targeted response. Next slide, please. Correlating citywide data enables us to work smarter, faster, and more effectively in addressing unsheltered homelessness. With the integration of artificial intelligence, including tools like data translation, machine learning, and large language models, we can begin to predict and prevent the emergence of high-impact areas. This allows us to move from reactive to proactive strategies guided by real-time insights and pattern recognition across departments. We can also better evaluate the outcomes of city programs. For example, environmental benefits linked to a participant engagement in initiatives like Beautify San Jose's, RV Pollution Prevention Program, and the Cash Retrash Program are measurable. Similarly, spatial improvements can be observed through off-street parking solutions such as the RV Supportive and Potential Safe Parking Program led by our Housing Department. By capturing and analyzing those cross-departmental outcomes, we not only gain a picture, a clearer picture of what's going on or what's working, we also have the ability to reflect these impacts in a lower impact rating score. This makes it possible to track progress over time, strengthen program design, and direct resources to interventions with the greatest positive effect. In short, the power of the data lies not just in what it shows us, but it also helps us act. And two things to close this update out. One, none of this work would have been possible without the tireless effort of our many departmental data leads and gatekeepers. Their commitment was incredibly important to bringing this initiative to life. And two, while this methodology is still evolving and may not be perfect, it represents a critical first step in building our capacity for predictive analytics and data-informed action. It's one of many iterations to come, and today's goal was to demonstrate the potential value this kind of work can unlock when we invest in it. All right. To wrap things up, we'd like to show you a short video that gives an overview of the work we've talked about today.
Just a note, I apologize for interrupting. The AV team has advised me that audio for the video is going to be available in the room here, but it's not going to be able to be projected over on Zoom. Just for awareness, the audio is not available on Zoom. We just can't, we don't have a technology connection. So it'll be audible here, but not on Zoom.
This concludes our presentation. We're available for questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for the thorough presentation and all the good work. We'll come back to the council to discuss it in just a moment. Let me turn to Tony first for any public comment. Let me turn to Tony first for any public comment.
Brian Darby.
Okay, I went up to the Alviso encampment on Sunday. It was Easter, and I wanted to try to do something for the folks out there. I met some very nice people, totally understand the city's position. Having struggled, having lost a home, I can relate to where they're at in a sense that luckily we were given some money to find another place to live. And I just thought, you know, that's the one thing we all want. We all want to go home. We want to go to a home. It's not... When I was at, even at Ag News, when the folks there, this is home. It's where you put your Christmas tree. It's where you talk to people. It's where you maybe eat lunch and dinner. It's something every human being needs since we were human beings thousands of years ago. We need a home. Technology is great and all that. As a community, as a country, as a world, we need to really come to that. I don't have any answer. I wish I did. Anyways, I sent an email. I think there was some really good insights in there. It pretty much agrees with what was said here. Thank you all for your hard work. Those people out there were very nice. And I wish I had the money to buy a hotel and say, here, let's go stay here. I really do. Thanks.
Back to council.
Great. Thank you, Tony. Really want to thank Omar and everybody in the box here for the update. Council colleagues, many of you will remember, we get this, this was our annual homelessness report. Heard it last November. We gave direction to staff to come back more frequently and provide us with updates. And as I said in our staff briefing just a week or two ago on this, the update, this update gives me a lot of hope that we are moving in a better direction. I see us being clearer about goals, more organized, biasing toward action, moving faster, having more impact in a cross-functional way. I think it's really impressive. I know some of our colleagues are newer to the council, but this report and the overall framework that you all have developed and are now executing of engage, shelter, clear, preserve, and restore is, represents a level of sophistication and coordination across many different departments and sub-teams that we simply really didn't have at this level of sophistication and consistency even just a couple of years ago. And so I want to thank Jennifer, Lee, Omar, Eric, everybody. I won't go through naming. There are a lot of people who are doing great work and a lot of people in many of our departments. But it feels that we are finally acting with a speed, urgency, and scale that reflects it being an emergency, being a crisis. We've talked a lot about it being a crisis and yet have often had solutions that have been very slow, very expensive, difficult to scale, and basically condemned thousands of people to live and far too often, a couple hundred times a year, tragically die on our streets. So I'm really, really impressed with the progress over the last couple of years. Appreciate how hard the team is working and the level of coordination and collaboration. I know we're heading into the budget cycle here. Many of the tools you're using are newer tools. No encampment zones, we were not particularly enforcing, but we know how important it is to building trust when we ask a community to accept interim housing on their dime in the neighborhood. Enforcing a code of conduct. We've obviously always had muni codes, but the consistency of enforcement really hasn't been there and even clarity about what, how much capacity do we have to enforce? How will we prioritize? That enforcement is still maturing. Programs like Homeward Bound, very new. Olive program, new. So I think many of these different tools are starting to come together and be put into practice. And as you showed in the data, the community is starting to see a little bit of the visible impact for the first time in years. After years of what felt like, not just hopeless, but actually a deteriorating situation, we saw that in our data as the number of unsheltered folks went up, impacts grew, and community faith, trust in government declined precipitously. And our polling data and all of the community sentiment and survey data showed this drop over time. I hope and pray that we have bottomed out and have a forward-looking strategy that's going to turn that around and get us on a better, to a better place. I do have a few more detailed questions, especially keeping in mind where we are in our budget and kind of policy planning cycle, knowing that by the time we get to a November update, many of these things will already be in motion and will be almost halfway through the next fiscal year. So wanted to ask about some of those newer approaches that are part of an overall holistic approach. One that I know we've just begun testing is Homeward Bound, where rather, this is a service we've actually always offered, as many cities do. But rather than waiting to get somebody indoors and stabilized and into case management to see if we can reconnect them with a family member, we're looking at, can we provide more of these services out in the field and move faster to reconnect people with loved ones? And I'm curious if, Eric, if you can confirm, this is a service we're now offering proactively through our street outreach teams? If we're, if you have any data on how many unhoused individuals have expressed interest and how the verification process is going?
Yes, so it is a part of our overall outreach program for when we engage individuals in shelter. To date, there are seventeen individuals who have taken up the offer in our various stages in the processing. As we go through and verify sort of where they're landing, ticketing, all that, they're at various stages. But we have seventeen uptakes just in the last thirty days.
Wow. Okay, well, that's better than I expected. That's fantastic. I'll look forward to hearing more about how that, how that plays out. That's powerful, obviously. We know it's $30,000 per person per year just to get somebody sheltered with services. It's $60,000 in impacts on, on public services to leave them unhoused. But to connect them with a loved one and give them stability that way is just incredible if we can get that done. Okay, code of conduct is something we've discussed a lot over the last year. And I know we have updated the code of conduct to include fire and infrastructure risk. But staff indicated it was difficult to incorporate rules and enforcement related to building materials because of how broad that definition is. I have spent, God knows, I mean, not as much as many of you, but a lot of time walking through encampments and talking to folks who are out there and seeing some of the very substantial habitations that have been built into the environment, typically into the creek beds using clay, cement, brick, insulation. People are talented and are building semi-permanent structures. I'm curious where we are in identifying what our expectations will be. You know, I think the last time we discussed code of conduct, at least part of the conversation was being clear that we're not going to allow folks to build semi-permanent structures. But I'm curious if we are feeling like that's something we can define and enforce at this time.
So thank you for the question, Mary. Yes. We think moving forward around the semi-permanent structures, that's a lot easier and, you know, a lot easier for us to implement the code of conduct around that versus building materials in general.
Okay. Can you say maybe a little more about that? We've had cases of, say, substantial amounts of plywood, which is likely to have more combustible material than a tent right under a bridge, a freeway, overpass, et cetera, areas where we saw what happened in Los Angeles a couple of years ago with stored materials, different situation. But can you say more about how you're thinking about building materials and the accumulation of those materials?
So if we find that folks have like an accumulation of pallets, they're extremely flammable. So that's something that usually rises to the top.
That was pallets, you said?
Yes, pallets, right? So we look for pallets. We look for chopped wood. We look for open containers of fuel. Think about like a barrel that people may be storing gasoline in. We look for those types of things and other things that are extremely flammable. We also work closely with the fire department. They let us know if they come across an encampment or an area where they say, there's a lot of items here. They're extremely flammable. And those, those sites are prioritized for abatement. So we typically abate those because they become priority sites. But if we say something like building materials in general, like someone happens to have bricks at their encampment site or they may have, they found a piece of a door or something, that usually just by itself would not rise to a level of... Doesn't mean it won't be abated. It just means it won't be prioritized for abatement. But we do look for those high-risk fire situations, encampments located close to mobile homes, mobile home parks, and those type of things are prioritized for abatement.
I see. Okay. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. And then are you able to give any early analysis on our efforts to reduce those tier-three encampments that we've prioritized? And curious, as we've begun to enforce a code of conduct more consistently, hopefully, at least I know that's the intention. And we're also looking at additional tools for enforcing a basic set of expectations out there to keep everybody safe. What can you share at this point about how reducing tier-three encampments is going?
What I can say anecdotally is that our tier-three overall encampments have gone down. We'll have the actual number by June. Last fiscal year, we had 345 abatements. As of today, before I came into council, we have 688 abatements in alignment with our code of conduct, our setbacks, and our no encampment zones. So as our teams are getting to those sites much quicker, it doesn't allow people to kind of establish an encampment of like a tier-three type size with as much accumulation of as many items because areas tend to be abated quicker. We tend to have more eyes out in the field with our teams looking for those things specifically. So it has just reduced the overall number of tier-three type encampments. Hasn't reduced encampments overall. We're still servicing 173 locations, but those really large encampments, you're starting to see a decrease in those.
Okay, that's good to hear. And of course, the hope again is with 1,400 beds coming online, historic investment, we're more than doubling our shelter capacity more than any other city on the West Coast. Though I'm hearing a lot from electeds in other cities up and down the West Coast who are very interested in what we're doing. The hope is to offer a safe, dignified place for more people, which makes your job and the impact on the community, the cost of managing encampments and all of the public sector costs, including frequent daily fire response, police response, brings all those costs down, hopefully. Couple, just a couple more things I want to touch on, then I'll turn to colleagues. On the Olive program, we've heard from community members that in many cases, RVs have returned after they're initially cleared out of an area, which is not super surprising. Obviously, the theory here, the goal, was to start to create some circulation after the onset of the pandemic. And us, for a number of reasons, being fairly lax, we developed semi-permanent encampments in front of parks, schools, places of business, and felt that that was deeply unfair, particularly concentrated in Districts Seven and Three, and that we need, though I know Districts Four, Two, Five, many others have more than their fair share of RVs, but the idea to provide some relief to residents, small businesses, public spaces. How are we doing at enforcing, using other tools like 72-hour parking rule that theoretically we all should be abiding by on public streets to make sure they're accessible? We're not accumulating belongings out in the public right-of-way? The registration tags, the operability rule? I still see vehicles literally on blocks on city streets with an accumulation of debris. How are we thinking about supplementing or even potentially pivoting part of the Olive program to not just do circulation, which has a value for folks? It provides some relief and at least ensures some amount of fairness. But how are we, how are we thinking about using those tools to incentivize folks to find a more permanent solution and keep those vehicles from being permanently impacting neighborhoods?
Thanks, Mayor. Let me do this, then, answer to the question in two ways. One is what we're really seeing out there and then what we intend to do to answer the second part of it. So what we're really seeing out there, when we go out to a beta site, we post it a week ahead of time. We then go and clear the next week. Then we spend some time cleaning the street and, and then we leave those signs up for a little while. So it could be a couple of weeks, one to two to three weeks. Then we return to each one of those cleared sites and inspect it on a 14-day, a 30-day, a 60, and a 90. So to date, after all the work we've been doing, we have two sites that we have had some returns. Only two of all of the vehicles that we've been dealing with probably moved over 400 now. One of those sites we, we visited was in District Four on Falling Tree, and it had five RVs that had returned on day 30. When we returned on day 60 with another investigation, all those RVs were gone. In District One, we did have four RVs return to Payne Avenue on our 30-day inspection. And they are, I believe they are still there. So that's what we're going to be dealing with. But to, to be clear, we have not had a big return to sites. That's our experience at our inspection and in-field investigation is looking like that so far. However, I think we all expect that as we move through this program and get more sites abated and engaged and moved around, I think we all probably anticipate that we will have some more returning to some of these sites. And that's the second part of the question that you had is how are we going to deal with this in the future? What we're doing right now is developing the MBA that was outlined in your mayor's budget message, which talked about all of those, whether or not we can be more aggressive on the 72-hour, the expired registration, not only for actually oversized lived-in vehicles, but every vehicle that we have on the street. And then if there's an in-op, I think that's something that, I should probably, an inoperable vehicle like you described, that is ability for an immediate tow. Complications are if it's an RV and someone's living in that one. But, so in the MBA that we're developing right now, all of those are going to be within a described description of how we think we can be more effective and implement those on a more proactive or aggressive scale.
Mr. Mayor, if I...
Yeah, please.
If I could, sorry, John.
Go ahead, Omar.
I'd like to actually ask Chief Joseph to come down. I think to understand like the picture around tow, some of the questions that you asked were around things other than Olive. And I think the Police Department has understood what's being asked in a way that's useful for council to understand in terms of the efforts, the sort of efforts that they're making now as it relates to enforcement and ongoing. So Chief?
Are you asking me a question or...
Yeah, I think the mayor's question, well, I don't want to put words in the mayor's mouth, but it's a question about efforts to enforce around towing aside from the Olive program. And I, it seems like there's been quite a bit of additional effort that might be useful to...
Right, it may not be towing. I just want to know, in addition to the Olive program, which is one approach to driving circulation, are, have we, we should be taking another look at 72-hour registration and inoperability, which are the other three levers, as I understand it, that we have for better managing vehicles on the street, whether they are parked vehicles, that is, whether they're lived in or not? So that was the, the follow-up to John.
Okay.
So I don't know to what extent that falls under DOT or the, or the chief, but okay.
Likely both.
Likely both. Okay. I'll trust that you are collaborating closely on those. Okay. And then finally, just before I turn to colleagues, no encampment zones, what are we seeing as we've begun to expand those? Obviously, we saw success with some early ones, such as the Guadalupe River here downtown. But Olympia, just curious what you're hearing out there.
So what we're seeing with the no encampment zones is as we establish the areas, folks that were initially in the area tend to understand that it's a no encampment zone. Doesn't mean people don't return because sometimes you get new folks that may not be as familiar with the signs or what that means. So the team does a lot of work in educating folks who may re-encamp. What we expect is that what we see at Guadalupe is there were a lot of folks within, when we established no encampment zone, we still had about 50 or 60 abatements during the quarter. And then the following quarter, it dropped to about 30 is more. People understood it, and we expect to see that same trend throughout the city.
Yeah. Okay, good to hear. I know it takes a lot of effort. Okay, let's keep this conversation going. Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Mayor. And a huge thank you to our staff for their comprehensive report. I truly appreciate the level of coordination that this strategy reflects across all departments. As we consider mid-year progress, As we consider mid-year progress, I want to elevate a part of the crisis that's often less visible, and that's our families with children. Our council adopted Children and Youth Services Master Plan, identifies housing stability as foundational to the well-being of children and youth. However, we know from McKinney-Vento data that over 2,200 students in San Jose schools were identified as experiencing homelessness last year. While most may not live in tent encampments, many of these vulnerable families and children are living in motels, cars, RVs, or in overcrowded conditions in apartments. These families may not be the ones that we see on our streets, but they are absolutely a part of this crisis. If they remain invisible in our strategy, we risk deeper system strain down the line. So I have several questions related to the visibility of family homelessness. First is how are families and children, particularly those not living in tent encampments, being considered or tracked within the ESCPR strategy?
So I'll address parts of this. Eric Siloan, Housing Director. Councilmember, as we think about our overall data collection that we do around families being served, first, both through coordinated entry, two, the data tracking that we do on existing residents of hotels, motels that we operate that currently exist outside of coordinated entry. And then three, the data that we collect through the HMIS system, through our outreach workers. We're aware of the rising need amongst particularly single women with children. About 30% or more of the individuals in the waterways that we have counted in the first phase are also single women with children. So we understand the high and growing demand of that population and are developing strategies to best serve them. Those strategies include the following. Number one, as we look at the implementation of the next wave of hotels, we're planning to set aside one or two of the hotels to particularly provide their needs. And those hotels will then be coordinated through the coordinated entry system so we can transition them into more permanent housing options. And two, as we're improving the data collection through utilization of iPads amongst our outreach workers, we're going to better understand where those entries into homelessness will occur. And through the continuing investments in the prevention system, hopefully be able to deter less individuals coming into the homelessness system.
Thank you. I think you teed up an answer to my next question, which was about gaps in interim housing. Because I was informed by the Housing Department that Evans Lane is our only current interim housing site in San Jose that serves families. And so just to reiterate, how are we addressing this gap and ensuring families and children are not left behind?
Yes, so as we continue to expand more shelter capacity to meet the family's needs, both in the hotel strategy as well as in future EIH sites, we're building on more beds to help meet and serve this population. So we'll continue to provide those updates as we continue to execute the plan this year.
And Councilmember, I guess Omar Passan is Deputy City Manager. I would just add, this is a place where our partnership with the county is incredibly important. Your, the council requested that we see to a joint meeting with that body. And there were several social service and other arms of the county enterprise that can, can bring rot to bear and have been in the past. And we'd like to see as much of that as possible. So that's another sort of joint opportunity to get county to support on helping get, get children and families off the street.
Yeah, thank you. And we know that housing instability and childhood significantly increases the risk of chronic homelessness in adulthood. Is preventing that trajectory specifically for children formally part of this strategy? If not, should it be?
So Councilmember, I'll start and then see if Eric would like to add. I think the thing to be mindful of is this, what you heard about today, it doesn't represent the totality of the city's work. It's a lot of the work. But Eric runs an entire sort of portfolio related to driving permanent housing, the prevention coordination with the, with the county and other regional partners. And so while there, there's an intersect when there are people, families who are experiencing homelessness on the street, this, this is maybe more appropriately thought about is how are we dealing with these massive stormwater mandates, environmental mandates? And then I think I'll pitch it to Eric to see how that connects in with the larger things that he also is, is working on within his department.
Sure. Thank you, Omar. So in addition, Councilmember, we also have, in addition to Evans Lane, Brandon and Monterey is also intergenerational families. In addition, our multi-voucher program also provides support to women with children. So we have a plethora of interventions that we have under our current strategy as well as addressing youth aging out of foster care, which is another ongoing and growing population demand within this segment that we're looking to serve. So happy to provide much more detail at the various points of intervention throughout the global portfolio that we operate in both shelter vouchers, as well as, as Omar had mentioned, our work around permanent supportive housing options as one of the larger uptakes in PSH units that a coordinated entry system comes to women with children as well.
Thank you. I believe that policy alignment with the Children and Youth Master Plan is a huge opportunity for us to reflect on the fact that we are the number one city in America for youth homelessness. And this issue is very important to our youth who are constantly uplifting housing as a key priority for them. And so I would love to see how we can coordinate our housing and our homelessness response with that plan. We also had a question about, maybe it's appropriate from the city manager to responder or whomever, but as we are thinking about the timeline for discussing new homelessness-related policies such as right to shelter, do we have a date where we can anticipate the opportunity to discuss that policy?
Yes, we do. So Jennifer Mwar, City Manager. As part of our upcoming budget study sessions in May, which were just recently published, I don't have the exact date in front of me, but we actually, under the Public Safety City Service Area Discussion, we actually noted the right to shelter, responsibility, sorry, responsibility to shelter. They have a right to shelter too, but responsibility to shelter is going to be discussed in that Public Safety CSA section of the budget study session. So we specifically noted it in the police department. We prepared to discuss it and answer any of your questions.
Thank you. I'll wrap up my questions with a consideration for the fact that student homelessness, as well as declining school enrollment, is, is a serious issue being looked at by our school districts and boards. And so I believe that that also presents an opportunity for us to think creatively about how we can work in tandem with our, our school partners to have forward-thinking models for addressing homelessness and our need to develop more housing. So to close, again, I truly appreciate the work that is reflected here and the scale of coordination that is involved in your work. But we cannot afford to leave families invisible, not in our homelessness response, and especially when we know the long-term impact on kids, schools and neighborhoods. And with federal programs like Head Start facing very real potential cuts, we cannot assume that help is coming from somewhere else. While there has been a lot of emphasis on what others can and should be doing, our families are in crisis today. And we cannot afford to wait for coordination to catch up with the need. Prevention is not just a value, it's a strategy. And if we want to reduce long-term homelessness in the city, stabilizing housing for children and families now needs to be part of the core principles in our strategy. As Omar Passan said, this is a humanitarian challenge that we are working through with compassion. And it's up to us to show with compassion and responsibility to our children and ensure that we are including youth in our response to homelessness every single time we're having this conversation. So, thank you.
Just briefly, I apologize. I wanted to make sure that you were aware, Councilmember, it was adopted, I think before you joined. But the Children and Youth Services Master Plan that you mentioned, one of the things that Angel Rios did, the executive sponsor, was come to the sort of homelessness focus area during the development and say, we need to make sure that we're focusing on how we support housing insecure, housing unstable families. And so they made sure in that process that we are now working through, through his leadership and Parks, Recreation, Neighborhood Services on upskilling, on connecting families, working directly with school districts, examining the possibilities of what might be available as, as districts downsize some of their uses of footprint, in terms of schools and that kind of thing to repurpose. So there are a number of, of lockstep efforts, and I think your point is well taken, that we need to lean into those even more as we head into the future. So thank you for that.
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember. Appreciate you highlighting family and youth homelessness. While a small share of our unsheltered population, our last point in time count showed it was one of the faster growing demographics within our homeless population. Also worth checking out our Heading Home Campaign, which is a five-year plan that is probably in due of being renewed as it sunsets this year. But it's a partnership that city and county are involved in through Destination Home to ensure that emergency vouchers, rapid rehousing are going to stabilizing families. And it's an effort to end homelessness and actually provide some immediate resources as part of the county-wide prevention system that we pay into every year. So there's a pretty comprehensive set of strategies there, but many are administered by the county, as was mentioned. Okay, let's go to Councilmember Kamay next.
Thank you. What a difference a year makes. I want to thank you for the tremendous collaborative work and really just thinking outside the box. I will say, I, I know that sometimes I can push, 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 push and, and want everything yesterday. But, but I will say that I, I really appreciate the approach. This is really, really hard work. And I don't think any of us can say that, 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 you know, you know, hurry up and do it and, you know, let's get it done. It's, it's, it's hard. It involves a lot of people, a lot of different departments, and, and I recognize that. And of course, you know, the community has been very patient. But I think that, you know, they also want things done yesterday. So I know that we will continue to be working together to find these solutions, but we've come a long way. We really, really have, and I think we have to acknowledge that. I want that little tape that you showed so that I can put it on my website, so that I, we can just keep amplifying that so that people know all of the work that has been done. And a real difference in approach, where it's not just one, it's not just beautify, it's not DOT, it's not the PD, it's not just one entity. I think it's great. And the addition of having the data, thank you very much. I think that that's really going to inform a lot of our work. It's also going to inform our community. Because, you know, you may see one situation where an individual may be either close or near your home, and that's all you see. But when you look at it in totality, it's a lot. You know, the heat maps are great. The, just understanding what is happening throughout the city is extremely informative. And, you know, I think that sharing that with our communities is hopefully helping in, in letting them know how the approach is changing, because it is changing. But I will say that I do agree with Councilmember Campos in terms of prevention. If we could do as much, as much, as much early on. And I think that there is a hidden community that is not down by the creek, is not, you know, but maybe they're in their cars. And I know that from time to time, I do hear about those who are living in their cars. And they may have a child, they may have two. And, you know, having, you know, the programs on the prevention side. And I do understand that, you know, the voucher and rapid rehousing and all of that do exist. But we may need more. We may need more. So as we're moving towards the emergency interim housing for those in the creeks, those are, those in tents, whatever, I also think that we also need to acknowledge that the hidden community that maybe, for whatever reason, is not as visible. We need to think about that. I mean, a few years ago, maybe it was two years ago, that San Jose was one of the areas that had the most youth or young people who were unhoused, one of the highest number of unhoused. And some of them were college students, but I think that that's, that's shameful, and we ought to, you know, do something about that as well. So thank you for your work. I appreciate it. I love the way that you're, and I know it takes a lot of effort because you have other, other things to do too, you know? It isn't just this thing, but this is a big thing. And, and I don't know how you do it, but, but I'm glad that you do. And, and I think that, you know, we have to recognize that this is going to take a little bit, right? And, and I'm just hoping that we're able to tell that story to our community in that, yes, we recognize the issues, but we also know that it's going to be sort of like time-consuming. So, thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Let's go to Councilmember Mulcahy.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all so much for the report. You know, each of you in different ways, you know, give council offices updates, but to have you all sort of in the box together. And it really reflects something that I've wanted to say in that, you know, kind of coming in from the outside, you sort of think you know how a city works, and you really don't. And what I think you've all demonstrated is that the capacity for interdepartmental cooperation is, is kind of remarkable. And what I, what I've never had is someone say, you know, oh, that's PD's job, or, you know, that's housing, or that's public works, or that's DOT. I think this particular issue has galvanized you collectively in a way that maybe nothing else could. It's a devastating problem we all face, but the fact that we're kind of all facing it together and you all kind of work in concert and don't necessarily shove the responsibility to someone else and say, hey, I think that might be something housing or DOT can, can help us work on. And I just want to say thank you for all of that work, because it's, you know, probably not what most of you signed up for when you got into public service. But it's the challenge of our day, and really appreciate the professionalism and, and passion that you all bring to it. So thank you, thank you so much for that. I've just got a few questions I wanted to pose. And Eric, you and I have talked about this before. You didn't address it in this conversation, but just curious around the recognition that, you know, the myriad of contracts we have between different EIHs and much like the accountability that we're expecting from, you know, our, you know, out in the community from our, you know, our unhoused, you know, we should have expectations of, you know, across our contracts between each EIH. How are we doing with that? And is that something that you can talk about? And I think we're talking about like security, we're talking about, you know, the food provider, we're talking about the onsite management, that type of thing.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember. So we are making progress as we are assessing both new sites coming onboard. So we will look to bring those online as we're under sort of the current strategy. And then come July, we'll be flipping a switch to begin consolidating those three areas of security, food and property management as we're going through the RFP processes now. So this is sort of a, very much a plane in motion that we are rebuilding and reconstructing. And so by the end of the calendar year, we will have assumed about half of all the portfolio underneath the consolidated amount. And then we'll be going through the contract amendments to come back to the existing half of the shelter portfolio that was doing individual provisions of security, property management and food and consolidated into the central administration. So it's a two-step process as we're continuing to administer sites and bringing on new sites and changing our overall operations. As Deputy Director Kupel Alexander and the team have set a standard supportive services model that are going to be rolling out to all the sites, that then encompasses each of those consolidations of the administration of food security and property management, as well as improved and more streamlined delivery of services.
Mayor, just, what's the expectation of these reports coming back? It sounds like this is the, sort of the first time in this new expectation.
Well, this has been an annual. I think we've gone to biannual. Is that correct? It's every six months now, and the timing is good because we're now in the budget study session period or heading into it. So it's a, it's a good moment to kind of get a deeper dive.
And I'm going to just add, as we go forward with next, next year's budget process, or as in May, and if we approve the budget as, as intended in the March budget message, with the policy direction to hear more about our, reducing our unsheltered homelessness council priorities area, we'll hear more about it during- area, we'll hear more about it during next year also in the committees, and twice a year in council as well.
And the focus area dashboards that are quarterly, actually.
And, and there's also, yeah, there is also the quarterly dashboards as well, so there's going to be several opportunities to keep up to date on this information.
Great, yeah, I mean, just on this topic alone, I'm really interested to see, you know, how much more effective and efficient sort of that reorganization of expectation is going to be on some of these, you know, management contracts. So maybe there's another way we can figure out how to get a report on, a report out on that at some point. I would say the other sort of piece of that, and it's not necessarily the managers that I'm talking about here, but the third parties that we work with, and I sort of look at a variety of people in the box here that do that, how are we evaluating those, those kind of partners that we're also working with? Do we have a kind of an internal review that you're doing on contracts?
In terms of any construction contract?
Services, third-party service providers, our nonprofit providers that we partner with, for example.
Yeah, so we'll, we're, we just released last week, earlier this week, a dashboard that shows the management of our interim housing sites. It's on our website now on their data and resources page. The next phase of our performance dashboard is going to be around contract performance of our supportive service providers, as we're implementing the council direction from June of last year. So that's going to be the next part, that's going to be released later this fall, so we can see performance of the overall asset portfolio, which is what's up now, and then the performance of the contract provisions that are reflective changes we are making to overall performance management, as well as to the effective management of the sites as a portfolio. So both aspects, as the city is now, at that point, towards the end of this year, we close to 2,000 beds under management. So we're managing quite a large portfolio, and we want to ensure that we are getting the most effective asset management out of that, property management out of that, and service provision standardized delivery.
And so what's a reasonable timeframe? We might have some, you know, results from that work?
We will look to have the first phase of those results this fall.
Great, thank you. Okay, switching gears a little bit to, back to RVs, you know, one of the things we, you know, talked about several meetings ago was our van-boarding issue, and some of which is results from people that prey on picking up, you know, inoperable RVs and setting them out in our community, right? So like Olympia, we've talked about this issue about these RVs that, you know, don't have somebody necessarily living with them, in them, they end up on a salvage yard, there's no real value to them, other than some of these people that prey on our community and put them out, back, back to work. We've talked about this challenge of, of, you know, sort of taking these units and sort of destroying them, right? Because there's no salvage value to our tow yards and to our, the, you know, the metal companies out there. So what are we doing now? You described something that we're doing now when we take these vehicles off the street. What are we doing now? When we have a vehicle that's inoperable, put it on a truck, tow it away, what are we doing? Do we know what's ending up happening to that vehicle?
Councilmember, let me see if I can try this, but I'm not sure that's exactly the van-boarding, but what happens when we do?
I was only drawing a comparison to when we talked about van-boarding, we were talking about these, in some cases, inoperable vehicles that tend to get, you know, bought by somebody who then takes them back out onto our streets. That's the only exercise I was creating.
And, and there may be other people that could better answer this, but when a vehicle is towed to a lot, no matter what kind of vehicle it is, the owner of that vehicle has, I'm going to probably get the times wrong, but up 30 to 60 days to recover that vehicle, and they have to pay the subsequent fees, whether they're DMV back fees and/or towing and storage fees. If no one is recovering that vehicle, then the, then the tow operator has the opportunity to auction that vehicle off, or scrap it, or both, for, for whatever they can get. You are right that some of these RVs do not present very much in a way of recovery, because not many of them get recovered, and if they are, there could be, or if they not, then there may not be very much scrap value. That's why the tow operators have asked, and we're working with them on a higher rate for, when they do do the tow for these kind of vehicles. So those inoperable, inoperable vehicles, if they're not recovered or by the owner, they're going to be scrapped.
Okay, so my, my light is flashing, so there's two things that we've talked about. One is, can we find a wrecking yard to actually put these things to bed once and for all? And we've got a company who's now interested in doing that, which we can talk further about later.
We would have to, that would, that would entail other legal aspects that I wouldn't be able to give you the right answer.
Right, right.
Because all of this is based on property that people own, and it follows vehicle code and other state laws, so.
Totally get that. I guess the other question I would just put out there, and, you know, just for the record, is some sort of a buyback program? You know, it's costing us a lot of money to move these things around when we get control of them, and then store them for 60 to 90 days, paying a tow company to do that. You know, if we had a buyback program, and we had a place and a way to get them off the street and put to bed for good, I think we should think about that.
Yeah, we are doing that, yep.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, and there's some limits around how much we can pay for the, there's some nuance there on the, some restrictions on the buyback, but we'll, we'll save that for a briefing later. Okay, let's keep moving, we have some more hands up. Councilmember Dwan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff, for, for the report, and, and I know it's a daunting task, that not only the Olive program, the EIH, the abatements, but what I see is that we're lacking of sight for safe RV parking. What we're doing with the Olive program is we're pushing RVs from one area to another. And I get a huge amount of complaints, because even if you look on Story Road, I drove on, I'm sorry, I was on Tully Road, between 10th Street to, actually, 7th Street to Monterey Road, I counted 22 RVs just in that little section. And so, are we chasing tails, in a sense? Because we don't have a safe RV parking site, and, and you know that within the last couple of years, I have offered, you know, multiple sites from Felipe to Tully to Singleton to Remalar, a couple of private, unfortunately, none of those panned out, but I'll continue to look for, for property that, that will help in, for safe parking, or even pre-engineering modular shelter, and, and it's over 18 minutes, by the way. Matt, it was an inside joke that we, we talked about, how long does it take for me to talk about pre-engineering modular shelter? And no, it's, it's an answer. It's one of the solution out of many, and I'll continue to hammer that until we get some, so that way we can get our unsheltered resident into a place. For example, the Coyote Creek just recently we abated right where Tully is, Tully Library, and now a huge amount of unsheltered residents right on Lucretia, before it was clear. And then the next, the next step is we're going to abate Remalar, right, Remalar Court, and then those will come out to Lucretia, right there in the neighborhood in front of a school. Then I'm going to get a lot more phone calls, and a lot more email complaining that, what are you going to do about that? So now you're pushing these unsheltered residents into our neighborhood. What are we doing about, I know we tow some of these RVs, but a lot of these RVs are either, some are abandoned, some are inhabitable, in a sense? Do we recycle them right away, or do we have to go to a tow yard, wait 90 days, 30 to 90 days before we recycle?
I think this one's mine, again, and it is similar to what Councilmember Mulcahy asked, is what, what happens? So those recreational vehicles that we do tow, and again, it's pretty small so far, what we've seen in, in overall, they go to a tow yard, the owner has the opportunity to recover that, because it's their property. Most often, and my understanding is most often, they do not. So then the tow company has the opportunity to sell it, which is not worth much, or to scrap it, and that's really what most of the time happens, so it's getting scrapped and destroyed.
All right, thank you. There's a critical need to abate along our exit ramp and on-ramp, especially at Story Road, and even Tully Road as well, and Capital Expressway, for that matter. I believe we, on Story Road, we abated like 47 times in 18 months. And do we reach out to Caltrans to prioritize a solution that would, you know, mitigate the reencampment? Some type of fixed option that meets the highway safety standard, that we can keep people out of that area? Because I, again, I drive down Story Road all the time, and I'm just tired of seeing, you know, reencampment, reencampment, and it's difficult. I've gone out there like four times cleaning with, even with the mayor and many other groups. How do we, how do we communicate or get funding from Caltrans to mitigate that? Because I don't think Caltrans have enough resources to mitigate, you know, multiple parts of the freeway.
Yeah, thank you for that question. So yeah, that is one of our number-one areas, as well, in terms of off-ramps and on-ramps at Story Road area. So we have had dozens of abatements in that section, so we do coordinate with Caltrans. Our challenge is, we can abate on a Monday and people return on a Tuesday. So one of the things that Caltrans has reached out to us about is a delegated maintenance agreement, meaning that they would allow the city to go in and abate that area to try to, so we could keep it clean, and then we could build Caltrans back for our time. So we're currently negotiating that agreement right now, and that is one of the areas that we will be listing as our priority area to do work in.
Yeah, and, and thank you. Recently, I spoke to you regarding how do we do a mural or some type of art along that wall? Is it possible we, if we can work on something like that?
We do, I had that on the list, and I discussed that with Caltrans. They're looking to see if that is an area where a mural will not have, will not cause drivers to take their eyes off the road, so that they go through a certain assessment for that site, and that is one of the sites that's on our list.
Oh, thank you, and I hope that we also work with Caltrans to beautify those on-ramp and off-ramps. They've been looking the same way for 40-something years, right? Or more than that. But every time I travel to Cupertino or some other area, wow, it's beautiful! And I, and I think, just because we don't voice ourselves, we need to really voice ourselves. One last question. My office put in a request to have a van that in the back of Maria Goretty, you know, blocking the back gate. It's off Yuma, Y-U-M-A Drive, and Overland Way. We put it in since August of last year, and that person, I get multiple reports from, you know, the resident who go to church, that the person is very aggressive, and I also trying to coordinate that with PD as well. And I hope that you can put that on your map, and hopefully we can help that person find shelter or move along somewhere else, because it's, it's impacting the church tremendously. By the way, I just want to say thank you to Eric Sullivan and CMO for working with our county behavior health, and, you know, especially with the needle exchange at Tully Library, and, you know, with kids and family attending there for events, or just to check out books. And I just want to say, again, I know it's a daunting task, I know it's difficult, but we need to take one step at a time, and I believe that we, we see the difference, but we keep working at it, and eventually we'll reduce them out. And I just want to say thank you, and I'm grateful for all that you do. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember, appreciate that. Let's go to Councilmember Salas.
I'll make this very quick and try to be brief. First of all, there's, there's no question that we're all impressed and encouraged by the way you're all working together. It's really, really fascinating and so greatly appreciated. I know how hard all of you are working. But I wanted to follow up on the mayor's question, John, about the, you know, the 72-hour violations and no parking violations. You said likely both, and what I thought is, and therefore neither, when you talked about coordinating between yourself and PD. Because I know, I've talked to the chief, and he says, yeah, I can give out parking tickets, but those guys and gals are, I mean, there's, there's a lot going on out there on the, on the policing side. And I just had an issue where you abated along Commercial Street, an Olive program along Commercial Street, they just moved a couple of blocks over, and they're in a no parking zone, and I, and I said, they're no parking zone, can you at least cite them? And the answer that came back was, well, it doesn't do much good to cite the people. But when I talked to PD, PD always says, make a report, because then I've got data. And I would really encourage you to, even if you feel like it doesn't do any good, citing in a no parking zone, at least I can tell my constituents, I, at least they're cited, and I can track it, and I can follow it. So I, please forgive my candor, but I would love to see you do the best you can with those 72-hour no parking zone, just put the citation on, let's get it started at least. Thank you very much.
Thanks. John, did you want to respond to that?
No, it's good suggestion. It's, we do a lot of citing, more than you would, you would believe, and sometimes there, it does not have an impact, and maybe that was what the chief was referring to. But what, what we're talking about with the, both police department and us, in abating of many different types of vehicles, both my compliance officers and PD both do those things. We do more, just because they've got other work to do, but all of that is, both of ours are responsibilities, especially the RVs, we can't do it without them.
Yeah, I didn't mean to, the chief wasn't saying that he couldn't or wouldn't, but he just, that I was just, I'm just observing what I see on the PD side, and how a citation, I know it's not, I oversimplify, but it's not that hard to put a citation on a windshield, and that is parking compliance's job. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Councilmember. Let's go to Councilmember Cohen next.
Thank you. Let me start first by acknowledging that the group that's sitting over there reporting is probably do, has the hardest job in the city. And it's made worse by all the phone calls that I make to you over the course of a week. But I, I do want to acknowledge, I mean, it's tough, it's tough work, and we're asking a lot of you. I want to kind of start with the good news. The way the Berry SS site, you know, the frustration of how long it took to open and how long it took to get built, we're all, we're all beyond that, but the way it opened and the success that we're seeing there is, is an incredible thing. I mean, I was, I've been moved by the experiences that I've had, seeing the effect it's having on people, the impact it's having on people, and how well we hope is doing, running that site, and giving people service, and giving people hope, and people who really, who are now going to work and starting to look for homes, and people, it really is an incredible model for what I hope we do, continue to do as we move forward, and will do more of. And anybody on this council who wants to take a look with me, you know, let me know, because I think it's worth everybody experiencing how well it can go and what it can do. Now I'm going to transition to the hard part, and I'm going to apologize about some of the things I'm going to say, because I, the past month in dealing with the process has been, you know, one of the hardest periods of time that I've had as a council member, and I've had some tough issues in the last few years. And I will certainly look forward to the day that I don't have to, three times a week, drive down the same streets over and over again, looking to see about progress. But I'm not going to focus on the areas that we've been talking about, near the, this parking site, things are moving, things are happening, I will continue to be in touch with you about what's going on there. I will continue to be in touch with you about what's going on there. That's an example of where it works. We opened an RV site. We offered every single person within a radius service. I believe about 60% of them took the service, about 40% didn't. This is my, you know, you know, non-scientific polling. About 40% remained, and now we're focused on those 40% and saying, look, you were offered something, and now I think I'm fully, I know that we're all fully supportive of saying we have to make sure that the rest of those folks move because they were offered that service. But I just wanted to talk a little bit about the aftermath of the program, whether it's Olive or no encampment or anything else. You know, John, you made a comment about, you know, removing Olive, about removing our, having RVs move from an Olive and going back and seeing that the area remained clear. If our focus is the Olive sites, then it's possible that the program looks successful. What I believe we're doing is creating new Olive sites. We're creating new sites that if we took an inventory starting today, would become a new set of sites we would have to put on a list to clear. And that concerns me greatly. And we have a live example of that this week, and, you know, it's been brought up by others, but it's the live example up at 237 this week. And we've had a lot of conversations about whether this is the right thing to do, how we can do it, how we can do it well, what we're going to, how we're going to make sure this doesn't just spread the problem over multiple locations that we no longer can have a handle on. Certainly, we can't stand in the way of a development that's coming that's important for the city, and we need to have a plan for that. But without the addition, the benefit of a site there where people are offered service, what is happening within one day is very concerning to me. We now have three RVs parked in a park in Bay Point. We now have RVs lining the street in Alviso next to the school and the fire station and the park. We now have, so this is one day after that abatement started. So I just wanted to be clear that we are not anywhere close to being done when we clear out that encampment. You will be hearing from residents, I will be, you will be hearing from me, you'll be hearing from my team. We're now driving, we now have to spend our time driving around to do inventory about where the RVs went. But we know of several that are now in a park in North San Jose. And so I just want to be clear that this is, this is something we have to be thoughtful about, and it's going to happen again at Columbus Park. It's going to happen again at a lot of these places. And I feel like a broken record because I feel like every week when we have a discussion about homelessness on a different topic, I say the same thing. But the unintended consequences make me feel like we're just spinning our wheels a lot of the time. So I felt like I had to express that. It's been, it's, you know, many of, I think, I think it was Councilmember Mokeh who made the comment, none of you went into public service to be dealing with this. None of us on this dais went in, ran for office or wanted to be on this council to have our full-time job being, dealing with this. That's what District Four basically is right now, is a full-time encampment complaint line, I would say. We hope that we'll get to a point at which this is no longer happening. I know that we're making progress. I fully support everything we're doing, and I think all of the expansion of beds and sites and parking spaces is making a difference. But if we continue, I believe, going too fast, we are not making it better. We're going to spend a whole lot of money, a whole lot of resources, and a whole lot of staff time dealing with the effects of each thing that we do. So I just, I feel like I need to repeat this again. We will be, of course, doing inventory over the next two weeks in Alviso and North San Jose about what happened after this particular abatement. And it's unfortunate that we have neighbors on cities around us that are also enhancing this problem. I don't deny that at all. I mean, we know that Milpitas created a lot of the problem at 237. We know that Santa Clara created part of the problem in Alviso. But we are where we are, and we have, you know, responsibility to do this in a compassionate and smart way, and one that frankly doesn't make the problem worse than it was. You know, we had, we've had conversations about what are the appropriate sites where we can leave it be, right? The sites that are further away from residents, the site that are further away from parks, that are further away from schools. As we reduce the number of acceptable sites, the impact is greater on neighborhoods, greater on parks, greater on schools. And so I'm particularly concerned right now. I'm in a heightened state of this at this moment. So again, like I said, I'm apologizing for my lecture. I was trying to figure out how to ask questions out of this, but I just needed to make sure it's understood that what we're asking for as a council often is not something that is always making it better. We heard from Councilmember Salas about, you know, one abatement that created another problem just down the street. I mean, so I just want, I think we really have to be thinking through what are the ways that we do this in the least impactful way on our community, and also in a way that's not going to have the 47 abatements over and over again in the same sites. And I don't know the answer to that. Obviously, the scaling up of safe places for people to be is an answer to that. But we need to just kind of take it thoughtfully and be smart about it. I also want, you know, I appreciate Councilmember Campos's comments. I suspect we are about to see, you know, that unfortunately, given all the hard work that we've done and a lot of comments from my colleagues about what a difference it makes in a year that we've seen all these improvements, we are about to see what I believe is going to be an explosion of homelessness in California over the next year. We're about to see the cutoff of resources and services that are actually protecting people from becoming homeless. And so, you know, we're going to clear all this, we're going to feel good about ourselves, try to pat ourselves on the back, and the minute we do, we're going to see another round of people moving into the same locations. So, you know, we might have to rethink our, what we want to do, what our approach is, what our goal, what our best goal is for the long-term success of this, rather than the short-term, what looks like wins that people are going to say, hey, look, we've made a difference, look how, you know, look how successful we are. Because, you know, I suspect that in six years, the next group of council members sitting on this dais will be having this exact same conversation. And that's, that I think is frustrating to everybody. So again, kudos to all of you for continuing to do the work that often is very hard and thankless, honestly. But I just wanted to express what I think are real, live concerns about the effect of the things that we're doing that aren't always as successful as we want to believe they are. So I think, thank you for allowing me, for indulging me that moment to sort of throw some, you know, cold water on our positive feelings. But I just want to make sure that those comments were reflected in the meeting. Thanks.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I think those comments resonate for all of us. I think we're all experiencing the frustration of feeling like, hey, we are making some progress, but it still truly is quite a crisis out there. And I think the point Councilmember Cohen made about prioritization of which spaces we choose for more rapid abatements, more enforcement, enforcing no encampment. Obviously, we've been having that conversation now for a few years, but it's evolving. And certainly, we cannot enforce everywhere all at once equally well. We can't do no encampment zones everywhere, though we have neighboring cities attempting to do that, which is a problem. I do think the baseline, high-level strategy the council's adopted, which I think is the right one, though imperfect and incomplete, is invest in a tremendous amount of safe and managed places where people can go, and then increasingly hold people accountable for using them. But 1,400 beds, as much as it is, it's still not, you know, what could be 5,000 people out there. I think we have to recognize that. So prioritization is going to be important. I do think, though, the, as much as the unintended consequence of enforcement and engagement and abatement is frustrating, I also, bless you, do want to note the sort of counterfactual that we saw during the pandemic of disengagement. And the unintended consequence of not engaging is also costly in terms of accumulation of people and belongings and cycles of crime. And we've seen that by engaging folks, we create different incentives. We've seen that by, when appropriate, warrant checking folks, sometimes we get very dangerous people out of encampments who should not be there. We come across caches of weapons and drugs. We have seen, and that's not, I'm not trying to paint with a broad picture there, but engagement itself and a certain amount of disruption has also actually been incredibly productive. And so it's about how do we prioritize and strike the right balance? Because it's true that we don't, we certainly do not have a line of sight to having a bed for every person out there. And certainly until neighboring cities start stepping up and doing more and not, Councilmember Cohen named a couple, and we should continue to name if we have to, a little naming and shaming because we are, we are absolutely seeing individuals and RVs, and I would say increasingly, from neighboring cities like Milpitas, Santa Clara, and Fremont. And we've got a, so there's more, I see staff nodding their head vigorously. So let me go to Vice Mayor Foley.
Thank you. And Councilmember Cohen, I feel your frustration. We've been working on this, you and I, for many years on this council, and Matt as city council member before. And it really wasn't until this report that I really feel a sense of hope. It always felt a little bit like whack-a-mole. And it, and from the way you're talking, it still feels that way. And I know, we haven't solved it at all. But at least we have a team in place that is communicating with each other, that is working well with each other, that's attacking each part of homelessness in their particular way, but coordinated with each other. And we're, we're working towards solving it. We're not solving it yet, and it won't be solved while I'm on council, and maybe not while you're on your council, while you're on council. But I want to acknowledge your frustration. I think we all feel frustrated from one time or another in connection with homelessness and addressing it. For a long time, you and I brought in sanctioned encampments that were defeated soundly by our council around the pandemic time. We were trying to shed a light on solutions, but no one at that time felt it was important enough or strong enough or successful enough. Now we're looking at things, well, if we can house someone in a hotel for 72 people, that's a success. If we can house EIHs for 216, that's a success. It doesn't have to be 500 people in one building. We can do these one-off buildings and still accomplish, get closer to accomplishing our goal. So I feel, first of all, I thank you all for your dedication, and I know you all have other jobs that you are doing, but this one is the one that must consume most of your time, most of your brain cells, most of your energy when you're not working. You're probably consumed about it as we all are. And so I acknowledge all of that and the work that you are doing and the city manager is doing. And really, I feel hope. I'm truly impressed by the collaboration and I, but I know we're not done, Councilmember Cohen. We've got a long, long way to go. Can you, I do have a couple of quick questions. You talked about the Homeward Bound program, and I actually was pleased to hear that there are 17 people in the process. Can you tell me what that means? They've raised their hands and said, yes, I'm interested. Yes, I have family members. And are we, so what's, can you give us just some idea of what the steps are involved?
Yeah, so they're, I'll categorize it into three buckets because there's a broad scale depending on a few considerations. One is how far they're going. Do they have a family member or a friend? Can we verify? How long does it take to verify? That's one step. Another step then is how do they get there? What's the most efficient means for them to get there? What's the quickest way to get there? Do they return phone calls? Are we able to find them again? And then three, there's a sort of another bucket of that 17 that as they've gone through the process, something happens over the couple of week period, and they end up in the hospital or in jail or a bunch of other places. So the process is long and varies very tremendously as the outreach workers are doing this very much on a case-by-case basis, which we knew was going to be the intent of it from the start.
Yeah, that's a lot of effort for limited success, and it must be frustrating too, to, okay, I have a family member now who will accept this person, and then they're in jail or they're in the hospital or something happens to them. Okay, I'll be curious to watch that as it goes forward. And Olympia, I'd love to hear about the code of conduct and the construction models that you're working on because those are huge problem along the creeks, and they're improving because we're being more, we're attacking the problem better. But we hear all the time about building materials being stolen and generators and solar panels being conducted, or being constructed and these, with condominiums, some people have referred to them as condominiums. And then it's, it's hard to move them along because then you have to break them down. So I, the task that you have, all of you, is so undaunting, but I truly am grateful for your, your time and your energy and your collaboration in working on this. And I know this is just the beginning, and I look forward to the next six-month report. Thank you for that.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Appreciate it. Let's go back to Carl Salas. Councilmember Salas.
Yeah, just wanted to tell you, Councilmember Cohen, I'm glad you brought that up, but I want to make sure everyone knows that I am very in favor and appreciative of the Olive program. It's one of those things that perfection does not want to get in the way of the good, and we've got to keep those, those things from growing like we have at Columbus Park. So thank you very much.
Yeah, agreed. Only thing worse than moving an encampment is turning the other way and letting it grow out of control. And we've seen that in places, and it's been a disaster and extremely costly to try to ever get in there and deal with it later. Okay. I can't remember now, did we have a motion on the report? Did anyone make a motion?
Move forward.
Okay, I heard the Vice Mayor and who seconded, Councilmember Candellis, and I heard Councilwoman Dewan. I'll let you guys arm wrestle later. Tony, you can, you can choose. Thank you again to staff for all the hard work and the thorough update. We appreciate it.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to open forum. Opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items not on today's agenda that are still related to city business. Tony, do we have any comment cards?
Yes, I have seven comment cards. I'm going to call all seven names right now. When you hear your name, come on down. First person to the microphone, go ahead and speak. The other people can sit in the front row where it says reserved. I have Quinn Tran, Brian Darby, one that just says resident, related to real estate, Megan Williams Ha, it looks like Ha Tran, I can't quite read the handwriting, Quinn Tran again, and Mark Trout. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the job you do, Tony. I was thinking, one thing we were talking about today is perspective, and that's sort of where this open forum is. I was listening to a debate of two people. One was debating that the earth is flat, and they were serious, and this person has hundreds of thousands of followers on social media. And the other one was debating that it was round, but they both agree that the moon landings were a hoax. That's the level of belief that I'm sure you deal with on a regular basis, maybe not to that extreme. I was thinking, one of the things that has always changed my perspective is to look at the pale blue dot that Carl Sagan talked about. And they turned the, one of the greatest achievements of humanity was to land on the moon, and the other one was the Voyager mission. And he turned the Voyager around, and they took a picture of the Earth-moon system through Saturn's rings. I know that doesn't sound like, but that's where we all live. That's where you live, that's where I live, that's where everybody lives, no matter what it is. And this, maybe someday our species will be able to migrate, but not now. This is where we make our stand. I think that's pretty important.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker.
I have cancer in my tongue. About seven months ago, I just started talking. My friend will listen for me. Is that okay? Thank you.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor and honorable council members. I will speak for Megan Williams, who has a health condition and cannot speak about something that is very dear to her heart. But first of all, and shouldn't be counted until her, her two minutes, I would like to thank the mayor and the councils for working so hard this afternoon. I learned a lot. So this is what she would like to say. Good afternoon, Mayor and honorable council members. My name is Megan Williams, and I stand before you not just as a cancer patient, but as someone who has poured hard time and resources into a cause that means the world to me and to so many others. Since 2012, I have devoted myself to helping build the Black Wall at the Vietnam Museum, a solemn tribute to the heroes who gave their lives for freedom. In 2020, I contributed again to the creation of the Quang Chi Monument, another sacred symbol of courage and sacrifice. These landmarks are not just pieces of history, they are the soul of the resilient community, a bridge for generations, and a testament to the sacrifices made in the name of liberty. And now, as we approach the fiftieth anniversary of the loss of our country, such a symbolic and meaningful milestone, this museum must not be silenced. The thought of closing it down breaks my heart. It feels less like a decision and more like a punishment to all those who have fought, who have given, and who have remembered. I humbly ask you, please keep the Vietnam Museum open. Let it...
Thank you. That's your time.
Dear honorable mayor and city council member, my name is Hachia, president and executive board of the United Vietnamese-American Community of Northern California. I'm here today after learning that the Vietnam Museum had been closed. I would like to respectfully remind you of the statement made by Mr. Jim Ritt, representative for Mayor Matt Hamon, on Wednesday, January twenty-nine, 2025, at 2:00 p.m., assuring that the Vietnam Museum would remain open three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year and would not be affected by any dispute between involved parties. And that time, Councilmember Binhuan was there too. Today, I respectfully urge all council members to support and approve the reopening of the Vietnam Museum, especially this year as a repair for significant fifth commemoration on the phone of Saigon, April thirty, from 1975 to 2025. This event holds profound meaning for our Vietnamese-American community, where we honor our history of sacrifice and ongoing commitment to freedom and democracy. Thank you for your consideration. Bye.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Mayor Mahon and city council member and city manager. My name is Quinn Tran. I am president and executive director of the Immigrant Resettlement and Cultural Center, which is also the father entity of the Vietnam Museum. I'm here today to do three things. One is to pass on the letter that the founder, Mr. Lothu, had written to Mr. Bill Shro, and I believe you will copy in on, to remind you that the museum is still open, closed to this day, and that should not be the case. Two, in his words, he wants to dedicate the museum to the community, and it belongs to the community, and therefore it should be kept closed. And legal resolution, or whatever kind of resolution, seems to take a long time. Therefore, I'm here to ask for your help in intervening in getting this matter resolved. We have reached out to the other side, and nothing has happened except just words in the community back and forth, which should not be the case. I'm here because I'm, I am part of the board directors of IRCC that was legally elected onto the board by the members on January eleventh, and reformed on February twenty-six by the members in their annual meetings, and in accordance to the organizational bylaws. Thank you for your consideration, and thank you in advance.
Thank you.
Well, I was very pleased with our president on Easter Sunday. He made that declaration that the biggest event in all of history is the death and resurrection of Jesus Christ, and he was a hundred percent true. Right. You know, isn't that amazing? Joe, last, last year at this time, remember he dedicated Easter to the Day of the Pedophile? Because, you know, his daughter's diary says he's a pedophile, so he says, "We've got your back if you're trans." But, you know, that's the mercy of God, that we got Trump back in there, and all of us should become Christians because of the mercy of God. He says, "The goodness of God should lead thee to repentance." Now, Trump had no idea that when he made that proclamation, it was exactly three-hundred-and-sixty months from the start of the Sabbath year that would bring in the seventieth Jubilee and the end of the times of the Gentiles. All three of those events happened in 1995. It began in April.
Let's stay focused on city business if we could. I'm letting you go here, but what's the city business you're pointing to?
Mayor, I voted for you over Cindy Chavez. I'm not lying. I put my hand on a Bible, okay? Now, please, I'm supposed to have the opportunity to talk.
Yep, on city, on city business.
It's city business because we all said, well, I wasn't here when you said it, but we pledged allegiance to the flag. We acknowledged what? We're one nation under him, right? So we should not, you know, say we can't talk about God, because we just said we were one nation under God, and every president put his hand on the Bible, didn't they? Huh? They put their hand on the Bible. So, you know, is city business. But this is very important. Jesus is coming back soon. It's no coincidence. It was three-hundred-and-sixty-five months, if you use a month of thirty days, and God's month, there's actually two Bible months, okay? There's the month of the new moon that God gave Moses. In Exodus, chapter twelve, you have twelve new moons, and you throw in an extra month every two or three years, so Passover, you know, aligns in the...
Is that your time? Thank you. Back to council.
All right. Thank you. That is your two minutes. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Tony, and everyone. We are now adjourned.